With the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for If I could have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bergman.
Present.
Commissioner Marsters.
Present.
Commissioner Harper-Petersen.
Present.
Vice Chair Gutierrez.
Present.
And Chair Silverman.
Present.
So, this is the period of the meeting which is for public comment that is limited to items not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policies refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone who's here to provide public comment on a matter that is not on the agenda? Okay. The next item, seeing none, the next item is approval of the minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them? And if so, does anyone have any changes they would like to recommend? No?
I don't have any changes.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. So, next, we're going to open a public hearing. We have two public hearing matters. I'm going to go ahead and read the procedure for the public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will then make a presentation, if any. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form, if they elect to, found by the door, and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. Items are, for the record, that we have two pieces of correspondence. Both of them are on the zoning ordinance amendment. One is from Seth Deagle to Lisa Porras dated January 4th, 2015. The subject is comments on proposed zoning changes. And the other one is an email, or it could be a memo, it's hard to tell, from Bob Black to the Planning Commission dated today's date. Subject is item 6B. Everyone on the days has a copy of those, and they're available to the public as well. I have one speaker slip and a lot more than one person. If I could just get a sense, now, obviously, it's helpful if folks fill these out, you don't have to, but it would be helpful to us if you did, and you can bring them up and hand them to Al Savay or Lisa Porras. But if I could just get a sense, if you folks don't mind, how many folks are here, just by a show of hands, to speak on the first item? Sorry, thank you so much, I appreciate that. The first item, as of right now, and I was considering reordering them, the first item is the housing element, and the second is the zoning ordinance amendments. So, who is here to speak, if you don't mind letting me know, on the housing element? That's kind of what I figured. So, I'm going to go ahead without objection, and I'm going to flip them, and I'm going to go with the zoning ordinance amendments first. And before we begin with that, I'm going to make an observation that may affect the desire of some people to stay and speak. One of the recommendations to the Planning Commission deals with hotels and hotels in East San Carlos, the zoning that allows for hotels. I've been asked by Mr. Savay if staff can have some more time to do outreach to the community on that item because he has not had, the planning staff has not had the opportunity it would like to give the community the ability to be heard on that issue. Now, that's simply a request from the Planning Division. It's up to the Planning Commission to vote on that. I would observe for myself that I'm inclined to allow the Planning Division to have time to go back to the community and get input, but if folks want to speak on that issue, they're welcome to stay and speak on that issue. So with that, do we have a presentation on item 6B, which is now item 6A?
Yes, we do, Chair Silverman. Good evening, Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Lisa Porras, Principal Planner, here at the City of San Carlos, and the item being presented for consideration tonight is a series of, a total of five amendments to the zoning ordinance that we're asking the Planning Commission to review and make a recommendation on. One of the five amendments was previously reviewed by the commission last May, and upon further review by the building official, we wanted to make an additional clarification to that item, and this is regarding the matter of tents. I just wanted to put that out there. So, really, there's four new proposed amendments that we are asking the Planning Commission to review. On the table in the back room, there may be, I don't know if there's enough, seeing all the people in the room, there may not be enough staff reports out there, but, you know, maybe you can pass them around and share, hopefully. But I will, staff is here to answer any questions from the commission, and of course, there will be public comment, so we can dive into any questions you may have. So with that, the purpose of the zoning ordinance amendments for consideration tonight consist of a series of land use regulations, modifications to land use regulations, as well as modifications to development standards for specific zoning districts within the city. And these zoning districts are the IL, IH, MUNB, MUSB, and the MUDC zoning districts. The proposed modifications that I mentioned, the five that I discussed just a moment ago, consist of the following. The first is a modification to both the IL and IH zoning districts. It's a modification to the land use regulations within each of these districts that would allow hotels and motels in key geographic areas, and I'll describe these in just a moment, in key geographic areas of each of these zoning districts. The proposed modification would require a conditional use permit, and conditional use permits in the city are subject to review by the Planning Commission. The second modification consists of allowing, again, another land use regulation, allowing a commercial entertainment and recreation large scale in the MUNB and MUSB zoning districts. Again, a conditional use permit would be required for this one. In our ordinance, we separate commercial entertainment and recreation into large scale and small scale, and essentially, those are defined by the number of square footage associated for each of the types of commercial entertainment and recreational uses permitted in the city. And so for this particular modification, it would allow large scale in addition to the small scale that's currently allowed with a minor use permit in each of these zoning districts. The third is to remove a land use limitation, which basically specifies that the four-story in any of the city's mixed-use districts needs to be used for residential purposes only. Staff is recommending to remove that land use limitation in the four stories, which would essentially allow either residential or any of the other permitted uses in the mixed-use zoning districts to be allowed on the uppermost story in any of those districts. The fourth modification applies to the MUDC, or the Mixed Use Downtown Core Zoning District only, and this is to reduce the overall numbers of stories from four to three, and a corresponding height reduction from 50 to 40 feet for parcels that front onto Laurel Street for the 600, 700, and 800 blocks only. And in addition to that, on the 1100 and 1200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue, staff is recommending to push back or step back the four-story component on those particular blocks. And I'll lay this out a little bit more clearly. Each one of these has their own slides, so we'll get to look at these individually. And then finally is clarifying regulations for tents. Previously, the city did not directly regulate tents in a direct manner, and this is part of the code cleanup that we're doing, and we want to clarify that tents would be allowed in the city under a temporary use permit, but then be limited to only 30 consecutive days throughout the year. So, as we begin to look at each of these proposed modifications, I've developed just a few slides to kind of help us better understand what areas would be affected. Now, for the hotel and motel land use change, staff is recommending a modification to two different zoning districts. One is the IL, or Light Industrial Zoning District, and the other is the Heavy Industrial Zoning District, otherwise known as IH. So, on the screen here in the upper left, you will see the IL zoning district, which is shown in a, kind of like a turquoise color. Parcels that would be affected by this change are outlined with a yellow highlight. And as you can see, it would be for a limited number of parcels that actually front onto Industrial Road. So, one of the key requirements, in addition to geography, is that the parcel needs to front onto Industrial Road. And in this graphic here, the affected parcels are in between Quarry Road and Taylor Way. And staff had, you know, reached out to both the Harbor Industrial Association, the HIA. We also discussed this with the City's Economic Development Advisory Commission, as well as attended a meeting of the Greater East Side Neighborhood Association, otherwise known as the GESE, to discuss this particular modification, specifically in the IL area. And as a result of some of the comments that we received, and as noted in the staff report, staff is recommending limiting hotels and motels subject to a conditional use permit for these areas only. We had initially looked at other parcels along Industrial that fronted onto Industrial Road, but based upon community input, we removed those. So, in light of removing some and limiting in certain areas, we started to take a look at other opportunity sites where we would look at allowing hotels and motels under a conditional use permit process. And so, what is being recommended, as described in the staff report and is shown here on this slide, are a number of additional parcels in the IH zoning district that are outlined in yellow, as you can see on the middle and the far-right image on the screen. Again, there would be a relational component, which is that the allowance for hotels would only be for those parcels that front onto Industrial Road. And as you can see here, it would be for both sides of Industrial Road. So that is the nature of that modification. And as the staff report discusses, there's various reasons for why the city is recommending allowing for this additional sites where hotels and motels can be located within the city. We think it's prudent to do so. There's a great amount of interest in maybe possibly adding a few more hotels in the city, and for economic and fiscal sustainability reasons, staff thinks it's prudent to do so. This is why this amendment is before the commission tonight. The second modification, as I mentioned previously, has to do with commercial entertainment and recreational type uses. As I mentioned, the zoning ordinance currently allows for small-scale commercial entertainment and recreational uses, again, which is less than 5,000 square feet. These are uses such as health clubs, amusement arcades, billiard parlors, and these are allowed currently with a minor use permit. What staff is recommending is that large-scale commercial entertainment and recreational uses, which is anything more than 5,000 square feet, be allowed, but with a higher level of review, with a conditional use permit, subject to review by the Planning Commission. There, as the staff report discusses, the MUNB and SB zoning districts largely run along El Camino Real in the north section of the city, all the way down to the south end. And as we all know, El Camino Real is more of a destination-oriented type area within the city, and it would be more apt that a use that's larger than 5,000 square feet of this type would probably want to locate in an area of the city that's more regional in nature with a lot of through traffic, people visiting and traversing through the city of San Carlos. That is why this is before you this evening. With respect to the reduction of the four-story in the MUDC zoning district, we had, staff had initially been approached with a conceptual plan to redevelop some structures along Laurel Street in the heart of the city's downtown. This was reviewed by the City Council Economic Development Subcommittee, and they have requested that staff present the commission with the recommendation to reduce the number of stories in the city's downtown core. Again, this applies only to the MUDC zoning district, which is the city's downtown core, and the purpose of it is to retain the scale and character of the city's historic core. Currently, the code allows up to four stories. Again, this is along the 600, 700, and 800 blocks in downtown San Carlos along Laurel Street, and the recommendation is to reduce the maximum number of stories from four to three, along with a corresponding height reduction from 50 feet to 40 feet. And in addition to that, as is noted in your staff report, along the 1100 and 1200 blocks, I'm sorry, actually, I'm on the wrong slide, I just realized that. I really do apologize. Let's see, why don't I just finish what I was talking about here, so we can catch up, and I'll go back. The other one had to do with number of stories too, so sorry, I apologize for that. So here, in this slide, it shows the three points I was just making, that the code currently allows up to four stories and a maximum of 50 feet. Staff is recommending the maximum stories be reduced from four to three with a corresponding height reduction from 50 to 40. And in addition to that, and also in the MUDC zoning district, along the 1100 and 1200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue, we are recommending that the four-story be stepped back from the story below. Currently, the code would allow the four-story to align with the story below in this particular area in the city. And just moving backwards, the code currently states that the four-story in all mixed-use districts needs to be for residential purposes only. If we look at the land use regulations in the code that apply to the MUDC zoning district or mixed-use districts as a whole, there are other uses, obviously, other than residential that could be contemplated, such as professional offices. And so, staff looks at this as a cleanup item. We don't want to limit the four-story for residential purposes only. We believe that office uses, if somebody wanted to suggest office uses on the four-story, that that should be a permitted use as well. So, this particular item is maybe one of the more minor modifications to the proposed, as part of the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. And then, finally, did I skip one? No, I didn't. I mentioned tents before. So, as I mentioned previously, staff reached out and got some input from the Economic Advisory Commission. We also went to the Greater East Side Neighborhood Association to discuss hotel land use provisions in the IL zoning district. And we also made several presentations to the Harbor Industrial Association. In addition to that, individual notices were mailed to all property owners of each of the affected parcels, and notices were mailed to all property owners that were within 300 feet of all affected parcels. I believe the total amount of individual notices that went out were just over 1,000. And of course, we published a notice in the local newspaper prior to our holiday furlough. In order to approve an amendment to the zoning ordinance, there are two primary findings that the Planning Commission would need to make, and these are discussed in the staff report. The first is that the amendment needs to be consistent with the general plan, meaning there can be no conflict with other policies and provisions noted in the general plan. The second is that the amendment needs to be consistent with the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance, to promote the growth of the city in an orderly manner, and promote and protect the public health, safety, peace, comfort, and general welfare. The recommendation before the Planning Commission is up here on the screen, should the commission choose to make it. And both myself and Al Savay, as well as the city attorney, are here tonight to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, good evening, and members of the Planning Commission. And in your opening remarks, Mr. Chairman, you noted that there was a consideration for moving off the hotel issue to a future date. And what I would suggest to the Planning Commission is that you go ahead and make that motion at the very front of the meeting and limit the discussion so that we can go back out to the community and get some more input and bring it back. Of course, people could speak on the matter if they like, but I would prefer to limit the discussion if possible.
I mean, I'm inclined to entertain that motion if anyone's willing to make it.
I'll make the motion.
And so, for the record, I mean, the motion, we've got a, we've got a recommendation before us to make to the board, excuse me, the City Council, to make some changes to the zoning ordinance. And what the motion is indicating is that we're only going to consider making a recommendation as to four of those recommendations. So with that, there being a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay. So, with that aside, again, you know, folks who have particular interest on the hotel issue are more than welcome to provide public comment on that, but ultimately, we aren't going to be making a decision on that today, and planning staff is going to go back out to the community and get community views before it comes back to us, assuming it does come back to us. So, with that, does anyone have any questions before I take public comment? You can ask questions of staff later, if you'd like, but if anyone wants to do it now. Okay, so I have, I have two speaker slips on this subject. One is from Marge Boots, and I understand you want to read Ms. Deagle's email into the record. We all have it. I mean, I can read it into the record if you want, but it's part of the record. If you're going to, if you don't mind stepping up to the lectern.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that it was entered into the record that also, even though I didn't send an email, that I mean, I concur with what Seth's written, and I know that there were three people that couldn't attend tonight, and I just wanted to make sure that there was at least some sort of support for what was written in that email.
And it's in the record whether I read it or not. But if you'd like me to read it, I'm happy to.
No, that's fine, please.
Everyone's seen it.
That's perfect.
It basically is, it's taking the view that the, that the, it's not opposed to the reduction of 50 feet to 40 feet, but it questions why it isn't applied more broadly to other areas in the downtown core.
Essentially it, right. And, and then the idea that too, and you've stated that by reducing the, or expanding the zoning to allow, other than just residential in the fourth story, it's not limiting it to it, but it, but just the idea too, I think we make mention that it's something where we feel like it's a nice way to, you know, encourage a mixed use, as long as the residential provision is allowed.
Absolutely. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And then I have a speaker slip from Mr. Vandalos. I've only got two. I now have three.
Has my timer started?
It is, I can start it again if you like.
Yeah, it would be good, let me, let me just get myself settled here before.
You tell me, you tell me when you're ready, I'll start your timer.
Okay. So, with the timer, I will disengage from pleasantries. I'd like to, before you start the clock.
Feel free, engage in pleasantries.
Basically, thank the Planning Commission, because you guys are residents of the city. And it's a difficult task that you guys have, and it's not acknowledged often enough. So, I wanted to let you know that folks in the community who aren't on commissions because we're too busy fending off issues in our neighborhood, who might otherwise be part of the commission, do appreciate your time and effort.
Well, thank you.
With that said, I do think that it's important to note that you guys are part of the community as much as we are, the deists notwithstanding. And what's important to note is that we're supposed to be called the City of Good Living, that's what it says up there. It's not the City of Good Living for some, it's not the City of Good Living for folks in one community versus another neighborhood. And, you know, what we're, what we're facing here in the L'Oreal Park neighborhood is basically a permanent construction zone. We've got the Transit Village that came through, as you all know, that was a pleasant thing to work through. We've had East Side Connect, we now have Sewer Lines, they're going to go rip up East San Carlos Avenue soon, and Industrial Street. We have a landmark hotel site, and now we had this proposal from city staff to Aloha Hotels from San Carlos Avenue all the way south. And if you looked at that map, you'd note that there's a residential neighborhood right across the street from that. And the idea here was, you know, the city is doing sort of some kind of planned development, you could say social engineering if you wanted, with these, with this landmark hotel site. And now that the stakes have kind of been raised to allow for hotels, San Carlos Avenue all the way down. And that's problematic. I know you're not going to vote on this tonight, but what I want to talk about was the process, right? We are a vocal neighborhood. L'Oreal Park is one of the oldest neighborhoods in San Carlos. And we don't understand why, how this process went the way it went. It's good that it's being corrected, but I had to send letters to four city council members, talk about this issue, talk about the lack of notification, that houses, only one or two houses up from the street were notified. Most of us in the neighborhood had no idea this was coming until we saw a newspaper article. I was informed of this by just reading a newspaper article, took a look, took a look at your agenda, and had no idea what was going to be discussed from looking at the agenda. And I think that that is a big issue. So, the big points I want to make are, I agree with the previous speaker that height reductions should be considered in other areas, particularly along Old County Road, because that also is directly right by a residential neighborhood. And several people are here who I spoke with in the neighborhood, or who are not here, weren't able to attend. So the, the problem here is that with a vocal community, and with us asking to have a more collaborative stance with, with staff, that, you know, I'm really disappointed. I sent that note to, to our council members and let them know that this really isn't acceptable. This level of communication isn't acceptable to the community. So I think it's pretty clear that we really need to improve this communication and outreach to the community. We need to really work on a comprehensive plan that addresses the fact that our neighborhood is, is adjacent to different types of land uses. We need to focus on that to reduce friction, because otherwise, it's just going to be a battle for every single thing. And I'm, I'm not really into that. But I'll, I'll tell you, I've taken a little break, and, and I'm energized. And it's, and there are a lot of people in our community who really are energized because we, we are seeing what we think is an attack. And, and that's really unfortunate, because we are supposed to be the City of Good Living. So I just, just want to let you know here that the easy solution to this is to say, you know, if, two points.
If you could, I'm sorry, if you could just wrap it up.
I'm wrapping it up.
Thank you.
Two, two main points. The city bought this landmark hotel site to do it because they're saying, oh, it's so difficult. And now the city's basically saying, hey, everyone wants to build a hotel. So there's, there's something not, that isn't jiving for me here. That's point one. Point two, a very simple solution here is just don't build any additional hotels right next to the neighborhood. Do it south of, of the residential neighborhood. That's an easy way to do it, where we get economic development and we reduce friction. So let's focus on win-wins, not focus on win-loses. Let's not focus on, 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 let's, let's remove friction. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So next up is Ben Fuller. Wait, let me change my mind.
Well, Dimitri said almost everything I was going to say, but I want to reiterate some of the points. Yeah, definitely was a little surprised to have the hotel mentioned south. You know, we had a clear agreement with the city that there would be the landmark hotel, and that was supposed to get us some things for the neighborhood, things like parklands and other benefits that were going to come from that extra million dollars a year that are going to be made. The idea is there be, being a nexus between what happens in our neighborhood and maybe some development around the parks. And instead, what's going on, and this is to no fault of the city, is, you know, there's a high school plan now for L'Oriola Park, and they're going to be all using our park. And, you know, I, I was a little disappointed in, you know, that there've been, there's been no discussion since Randy Royce, four years ago, said that we should procure that firewood lot and turn that into some sort of dog park or something. Nothing has happened, no research has been done, and there's been no work at all about how we can add additional green space. Instead, we've got a transit village, we've got a hotel coming in, and now we have a high school that all want to use our little park, the oldest park in town, as Dimitri was saying. Related to the zoning issue, you know, I think we've all agreed that there can be hotels south of Taylor and Quarry, and I want to, north of Taylor and Quarry, I want to commend the city on making that change. I think that was a very good move. We were really surprised, however, and it makes me look like an idiot again and again to not know about this kind of stuff and find out about it in the newspaper, that zoning was planned across from Hall Street, literally, not even on the west side of the street, on the east, sorry, not on the east side, on the west side of Hall Street, there could have been a hotel behind some guy's house. It's just not something that we can live with. And so I want to echo Dimitri's point about developing sensitive land use planning, maybe a, some sort of overlay, zoning overlay for the east side, that downzones, Old County Road to 35 feet from 50 feet, it should never have been 50 feet in the first place, it should have been downzoned originally, we need to downzone those properties, preferably in time for these high school guys if they get there, not that they're necessarily subject to the rules because of state, but still, it would be nice to have that in place. So 50 to 35 feet on Old County Road, looking into parklands and nexuses between, or nexes, or whatever the word is, between development and parklands. And finally, without a doubt, moving all hotels south of the neighborhood, past the neighborhood, into some reasonable distance away. So nothing on Montgomery, nothing on Hall, but further down south, put them over at Britton Street or something like that. So thank you guys for making this change. It shows you guys do listen, and it's nobody's fault in the Planning Commission, we know that you guys are trying, and, you know, you guys all work really hard. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. So next up is Lester Girdlestone, I hope.
Evening.
Evening.
I'm only here to discuss the height limit on the three blocks of Laurel Street. I'm Les Girdlestone. My father's Howard Girdlestone, and I'm here representing the Girdlestone Family Trust. We own three buildings on the 700 block of Laurel Street. And when I read through the staff report, I did not find any economic data or economic analysis as to the effect of making this recommendation. There's no information on how it'll affect property owners, no information on property tax revenues to the city in the future, no information on the effect of sales tax revenues to the city in the future, no information on the basis for the council to actually make a recommendation on this. And there was no, excuse me, information with regards to the tenants and businesses who run and operate on those three blocks. These are valuable pieces of property. It'd be no different than if the city came into your personal residence and said, for aesthetic reasons, we don't want you to build a second floor on your house, or a third floor on your house. Immediately, you have devaluation of your property. There's a lot of money invested in these properties, and there's a lot of money invested in the businesses. And I think the short-sightedness of this announcement, my recommendation to you is that with regards to the height limit, that it not be passed tonight, not be recommended to the city council, till you can provide more economic information on the overall effect to the city and the revenues of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, Patty Marsters.
I'm not sure what side of the question I'm on, but I really don't understand some of the height lowering things going on. And I haven't heard it explained, and I would like you to figure it out. What is the point? It's supposed to, like Mr. Girdlestone said, is there some kind of analysis about the economic thing of lowering heights on Laurel Street? You have lowering heights between Wheeler Plaza and El Camino? Doesn't make sense to me. And here we've been fighting over and over and over, trying to say, please don't put high buildings near our homes. And then all of a sudden, it's like, hey, let's just lower those. I don't understand the point. And I can't believe that I'm here saying, hey, why are you lowering the buildings? But I am. And the other thing that you're supposed to decide is whether this is fitting in with the general plan. And many years ago, I was going to the East Side general plan meetings, and they said, we want multi-use housing on Old County, we want the top floor to be residential so that we can bring in the affordable housing that everybody says we need. So why are we all of a sudden saying, no, we can have offices? And then you're going to like, add to the parking problem, because those offices are going to have more parking needed? And the original idea was, okay, we can have multiple use here, because the residential units on the top will be using the parking spaces for the offices and businesses on the bottom. And like, they'll switch. They come home at night, and they'll use those parking spaces, and so there won't be a parking problem. And right now, you're talking about parking downtown and parking in our neighborhood, there's not enough. So I kind of, I just, if you figure out that there's a reason for changing that office, that fourth floor, and that you can do it and it makes sense, then do it. But you have to think about 20 years of, of people saying, yeah, we need affordable housing. And maybe you guys are going to come up and say something about affordable housing with the next thing. But it seems like that's kind of what they're talking about here. I'm surprised there aren't more people talking about affordable housing with this change. So.
Thank you. So next up, I have Scott Hyfer. Good evening.
I'm here to talk about the process, because I saw that slide, it says that ordinance should be consistent with the general plan. And I happen to be looking, studying the general plan. And I noticed that it's too general to really be useful. And my feeling is that we need a comprehensive plan that details each one of the specific projects, and, and itemizes each one of the problems, each one of the major issues, such as traffic, parking, congestion of various kinds, noise abatement, what, you know, all the major concerns for each project should be dealt with in a comprehensive plan. Because if, if we're, if we just have a general plan that's too general to be useful, we're not going to get anywhere, okay? Because nobody, everyone is saying that they're, they've been uninformed about what's occurring, because it's a complex issue. How many different projects do we have going at, at the same time? Okay, we have the Transit Village, well, you know all the projects. It means, it's too much for anybody to handle, including the Planning Commission, okay? So what I, what I propose is that we, you know, we adopt a resolution to start our own general, I mean, our own comprehensive plan, let's call it a comprehensive plan, because I don't think we should talk in generalities. I think we're, we're way beyond talking about generalities, because I read over the general plan, and it's mostly about setting goals, future goals, all the way out to the year 2030, okay? And my, and one of my concerns is, when I went to the, the meeting with the school district, one of their, one of their figures they cited was that they're projecting, what is, what was it, 10,000 new students by the year 2020? And they have, they have to have enough high schools for those students. Okay. Well, I mean, that's a third of, that's approximately a third of the population of San Carlos, okay? That's one heck of a lot of students. And my concern is, how many magnet high schools do you think we're going to need in San Carlos? Is it just going to be one? Or is it going to be two or three? And what happens if all, all the desirable parcels have already been taken? You know, for hotels, recreation centers? And then the school district comes along and says, hey, I need another parcel for two other magnet schools? Okay? Because, you know, 400 magnet high schools only going to take care of 4% of the projected number of students, okay? So I can see major planning issues coming up in the future. And if you guys don't have a more specific comprehensive plan in place, you're going to run into big trouble, because all, all the clean parcels are already going to be taken by hotels. School district is going to come along and say, okay, we already have our 400 magnet high school at 535 Old County Road, let's expand it and use eminent domain to build maybe two magnet high schools at that location. And you guys are going to be powerless to stop them. So, I mean, do you want that for San Carlos? I don't. I don't want two magnet high schools, you know, practically in my backyard, because I live on Bayport. So anyway, my, my idea is, you know, have a.
Can I ask you to just?
Yeah, sure.
Just finish up, please.
Yeah, okay. So, so my idea is to have a comprehensive general, comprehensive plan that includes, you know, all, all the projects for commercial development and, and also new high schools, okay? The general, the, I keep saying general, the comprehensive plan should be comprehensive.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. So next up is. Go ahead, Scott, it's fine. Scott? There is a document that exists. It's, it's, it's called the zoning ordinance. So I know you've looked through the general plan. Take a look at the zoning ordinance. That essentially.
Does it include high schools? It doesn't.
It does touch on them briefly.
Does it include traffic?
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. So next up is Mr. Bob Black.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Bob Black, longtime resident. We're so short of workspace, workforce housing, that I'm really unwilling to give up even one potential residential unit. And this, there is a proposal to do that, and that's why I'm here. There are four reasons why we should not give up any residential use. First is economic. If we give it up, it does provide a potential monetary benefit to the property owner. But that's offset probably more so that it's a negative value because of the lack of workforce housing, which means that the people who work here will have to commute here. And that's an expense that's really unnecessary, should be unnecessary. There's a sociologic problem also, that time commuting is time away from, it's generally wasted time. It's time that could be spent with family or friends, and there's a cost to this. It has to do with police and other support. Further, there's an environmental cost. People who commute are going to cause pollution. And it will be the air pollution and carbon, carbon dioxide. Finally, there's the disrespect to the general plan. One of the goals of our 2030 general plan is that by the year 2030, people who work in San Carlos will be able to live here. Now, eliminating the requirement for providing residential units seems to fly in the face of that goal. So I say, retain the existing language. The fourth story, the fourth story of all buildings within the district shall contain only residential uses. Now, instead of eliminating the requirement, provide some means for offsetting the residential requirement, so that we will still retain the potential for the residents and not lose anything in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So-
Jerry, could I ask staff to get some information, so that we can have it as part of the discussion later? Based on, based on what Bob was saying? I, I'd kind of like to know what the imbalance is. I mean, how many, how many homes and living spaces do we have versus jobs in the city? How, how much of an imbalance is there? Is that something-
Staff have that data at their fingertips? Or does someone want to start Googling something?
Okay. Yeah, they do.
All right. You're happy, we're happy to hear it.
Yeah, let us look it up.
Oh, okay. So, next up is Gina Vandalos.
I live in San Carlos, and I raise my kids in San Carlos, and I'm, I love this community. I moved here to raise kids, and I think it's a real, my neighborhood's super family-friendly. It's a wonderful community. And I have a lot of concerns about having a whole bunch of hotels at the end of my block. I think it will truly begin to erode our neighborhood. There's already so many, you know, so many projects going in, and I just can't imagine more hotels coming in at the end of my block. And I think it could just really have a problem, you know, with our neighborhood. I'm very concerned about traffic going up and down our block. It's a long block, so it seems that cars cut through our neighborhood. It's congested, lots going on, and they tend to start going faster as they go through our block, because it's such a long block. I'm very concerned about that. I've, we've even, our neighborhood has talked about even possibly cul-de-sac-ing, trying to just, you know, retain our neighborhood, what we can do. That's a part, what do I want to say? And another thing, you know, you talk about this big recreational or entertainment. What is that? I mean, is that a massive bowling alley? Or is that, or is that a, you know, movie theater? I just, I don't know. I would like to know what's going on down at the end of our block and what it might be. So I have a lot of concerns with that. And I just, in closing, I wanted to just remind you of how you would feel if you have a bunch of hotels at the end of your block, or, you know, a couple doors down, or right across the street. I mean, truly think about what it's going to do to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. So, next up, thank you, is Brian Schumaker. And for those who came late, and that's not a value judgment, I just wanted to observe that we aren't, we are not voting today on the hotel issue. Now, folks are still welcome to talk about it, but we're, we're not voting today on the hotel issue. So, please begin. You're going to get extra time till I figure out how to work this.
There was a gentleman that came up earlier that talked about the comprehensive plan, idea of looking at traffic, you know, homes, businesses, schools. I think that should be really looked at seriously. I live, you know, off Riverton, the hospital is just across the way. My doctor's here now, visiting him, and he has a big complaint. He says, "The only place I have to eat is a burger place." He says, "Why isn't there anything like that, like what's on Laurel Street, being built on this side? Because they have absolutely no place to eat." So if you're going to be putting in these hotels, just hotels, creating kind of a bubble eventually, I think, I like the idea of more of a mixed use, like what's been successful in San Carlos, which I think is, today it's provided 75% of the income for the other side. So, smaller buildings, more emphasis on restaurants, maybe some entertainment, smaller entertainment areas, maybe some hotels down further, further south. But I think more of a mixed use, a park, would be good. There's not, there's not a coffee place on our side, there's not almost anything. So, also, to those who are developing larger facilities, larger buildings, and like the hotels, et cetera, to maybe minimize some of the traffic issues that we are, period lawsuits are flying around, is that the freeway entrances and entrances, or is it Harbor and one going south, I can't remember the name of it, maybe they should gang up together and say fund, so that traffic can flow both directions. And maybe without, might mitigate some of the issues off of Holly. So, because everything's just going to be funneling into the, into the city through that one exit. That's it. Thank you.
All right. It's not, it's not user error, trust me. Nancy, I've screwed this up before. Zeebergs? Thank you.
That was a test.
Like many, I failed. I'm used to, I'm used to it at this point, it's okay.
We try to keep you on your toes.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Oh, there's so much going on in San Carlos. And we're looking for it to be the best for all of us, don't we? I have, a lot of things that have been said by so many of us here tonight is that, first of all, thank you for letting, letting us speak and for listening to the residents of San Carlos. Your job is not an easy one. And we appreciate the work that you put into it. I have to agree with those that have said, if you can give us the reason that you want to reduce the height, or limit the height of the buildings on Laurel, and keep it, and remove the restriction, that it be residential only, it's ideal to have that top floor be residential. Because it is, it would turn out to be better for low-income housing. And if you permit a fifth story, if it's setback, that could also be low-income housing. We've allowed the Transit Village, I believe, to reduce the number of their units for, I'm using the term low-income housing, and I don't think that's the appropriate term, affordable housing. Thank you. But we need it in San Carlos. We need it desperately in San Carlos. Because we're, you know, the peninsula is, is a difficult place for anybody to, to afford to live, period. And it would be nice to have a more well-rounded community within. We like to protect our neighborhood, but we also need to know that the city needs money to grow and function and so forth. The traffic is a problem. Growth is a problem. Knowing that you are taking steps to bring it to the community, to ask for input as to where hotels should go, where additional income should come from, is appreciated. I am disturbed by the high, the high school issue. Very disturbed by the high school issue. I have, seem to have missed some things along the line, that apparently the, the sale has already gone through of the property, whether or not they use it or not is apparently where it stands at this point. I'm running out of time, but I thank you for your time. But consider not that, consider leaving it so that you can have residential only on that and not reducing the tops, the tops floor on Laurel. We can use the housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, next is Priya Joseph.
Hello. Hello. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you as well.
We had a first accident on Holly this morning.
That's not nice.
Yes. So you know how the traffic stands. So I just have two points to make. One, there should be some sort of statute of limitations on, you know, how you cease to inform people of what's going on. Even council members say they got to know at the last minute. Right? They got to know at the last minute about the high school, like, you know, you, you didn't inform the Holly Street residents about the ordinance, you didn't give enough notice, and now this, right? So there has to be some sort of statute of limitation, how many times you fail to inform residents. You have to give people enough notice. The second thing I want to suggest is, you know, I don't know, when was the last time you walked on the east side? I highly recommend that each one of you does a walk down the east side between the hours of 8:00 and 9:00 a.m. on weekdays. That'll give you a ground-floor feel of, you know, what the traffic is like. So I hope you do that, before the Shape San Carlos sessions that you have on 9th, 10th, and 11th, I think. So I hope you do that. Thanks.
Thank you. And I, I know Scott wants to say that he walks those streets every day, so I'll say it for him. So, Susie McKee.
And I will vouch for Scott being there. I see him every now and then. So I want to thank you guys for putting this issue first. I so appreciate that. This is the only time I've ever brought something with me to read when there was a meeting, and I didn't need to do it. So, thanks a bunch. So, I just want to, want to complain for a moment, because I'm so tired of fighting. I moved here 16 years ago, and I've fought every minute of the time I've been here for that area. And I'm way on the other end, so it doesn't affect me as much. But, I mean, what, Holly Street is like an open sore. Honestly, I don't know how they can keep building things around a completely congested area already. Every other transit village, I'm just going to harp on this for a sec, is way off the beaten path. I've looked at them, I've done a survey practically. None of them are right on the main artery and the main streets of a town. Anyway, so, just like another thing to be doing like that, it makes me a little crazy. So, I just wanted to let you know that, because I want to let you know that there's plenty of people who aren't here who feel like I do. And I don't have a lot of sophisticated information to give you. And I will keep fighting, but I'm really getting tired of it. So, if that can hold any weight, I'll just put that out there. But thank you very much for listening. It's not, and it's not you guys so much, but I just want to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hersberg.
Good evening, and thank you for taking this item before the other one. This item kind of came up real fast for us. We, we did have a meeting with the city staff in November, in December, talking about hotels behind homes at Taylor and Industrial. And the community consensus at that November meeting was not a good idea next to single family. And we tried to identify other locations where it might work. And I would really encourage that the planning commission look, look for alternatives, not directly, you know, the example of an In-N-Out Burger with a 65-foot neon sign behind people's bedroom windows is not a good one. And introducing a 24-hour transient use next to somebody's house with garbage pickup and everything else that goes along with the hotel is just, it's just incongruent with the sensitivity of a single-family resident, residents. If you lived there, you would feel that way. Understand the city needs to make revenue, certainly want to work with the city on that, but not at the expense of, at the residents. And in terms of neighborhood notification about this item, I walked along Fairfield and talked to some of the property owners, and I found that some of them had not received notice about this meeting. And, so just was, was, would want to make sure that the notification is occurring. I know our neighborhood board was kind of blindsided by this proposal, that we didn't have a, have a heads-up it was going to be proposed quite as comprehensively as it was after a November and December meeting with city staff. So, would really like to encourage that the communication between the city and the neighborhood board and the residents just, you know, be improved and continue, so that we can work together on solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McClure.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My remarks are really a bridge between Item 6A and 6B. The hotel, the zoning for hotels along Industrial, I remember back a couple years ago when loft housing units were denied to a builder who wanted to develop housing down on Industrial. And I'm seeing now that with the housing, the workforce housing, we reduce the density at Transit Village, so we don't have as much housing, therefore cutting down on the number of affordable units either having to be presented elsewhere or on-site. And I'm afraid that the city council and the planning commission will be cutting down on the heights, again, on density downtown. We have 50-foot height limits, but nobody pays any attention to them. They cut the height, so you can't get the housing. And so, I'm looking at this land that you want to zone for hotels, and I know this is coming up again, but I would like to see consideration of workforce housing going down there. Because you can still walk to the train station, and you can walk to El Camino from Industrial, that's not very far. So that could be considered transit housing. And so, and we want more housing for BMR units. I mean, it's really a bridge between the two items that you're looking at tonight. And so I really, I really recommend looking at, allowing affordable housing to go down there instead.
Okay. Thank you. That is the last speaker slip I have for this item. So, I think that, assuming council says it's okay, what I'd like to do is close the public hearing on this item, and then we can reopen it for the other one. Is that fine? So, I'm going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing on 6B.
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So, before we start with our discussion, I was actually hoping, first, we had a question that, that Scott asked, and I don't know if we have any answer to that one.
Yes, we do. And actually, the information is actually related to the next item on the agenda, which is within the housing element. But within the preliminary draft housing element, on page 52, it lists the number of households in the city, along with the total number of jobs, and provides projections for the year 2020, 2025, all the way up to 2040, and the overall percent change.
And since the, not everyone has a, has a copy-
Sure. And so let me, so I guess, if we look at the year, it's on page 52. So, for this current year, and I guess these were projections based upon actual figures, ABAG projections for the year 2010. So for the year 2010, there were a total of just over 12,000 households in San Carlos, whereas the number of jobs were close, almost to 17,000. And if you look, year by year, the total number of jobs does exceed the total number of households as you look down through those projections. And this is at the bottom of page 52.
We don't, sorry.
Go ahead.
One more question. We don't know how many, what percentage of those households have two-income earners?
Uh, I'd have to look deep into the data. I, yeah.
I'm just trying to get a sense of, do we have as many jobs as we have housing in the city right now? Or are we way over on jobs and we need the housing? Because that, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Well, there is a, a line item for employed residents, so I think out of the overall number of residents within the city, there is information that specifies the number of those that are actually employed. So it's kind of in the middle of that table. They're just right above jobs. And that, you know, brings the gap, reduces the gap a little bit more. For example, in the year 2010, you had just over 14,000 persons employed, whereas the jobs provided were 16,820. jobs provided were 16,820.
Could you speak to the amount, I know it's in our packet somewhere, but I can't remember the number, but how many units are actually in project right now? Are, I think there's 450.
Oh, in the pipeline, I think it's about 464.
Okay.
Okay. And so then one of the speakers was asking about the rationale for reducing the permitted height of buildings in the downtown core. Does someone want to address that? And also, I mean, if you could clarify what portion of Laurel we're talking about?
Yeah, certainly. So we're talking about reducing the overall height limit in the MU DC zoning district. And I just wanted to check my presentation to see if I had a map, just for the benefit of the audience. Maybe it was on the last slide. I think I have something that.
It was, it looks like it's, it's, it's three blocks between.
That's correct.
Arroyo and San Carlos Avenue, right?
Six, 700, 800 block.
If I can get the pointer up here, just so that everyone can see, and I don't know if this shows on your screen as well. So the area that we were talking, that we're talking about, if you look at the dark purple here on the map, this is pretty much within, all of the proposed amendment is within the MU DC or downtown core zoning district. And the 1,100 block of San Carlos is located here, and the 1,200 block is located here. And the 600 block, I think mostly everybody knows this, but is located along this segment. And here starts the 700 block, and here starts the 800 block. So the proposed amendment is for parcels that front onto Laurel Street. So for example, if you own this property here in the MU DC district, you would not be subject to that amendment. Again, it's for only those parcels that front onto Laurel Street. And for those parcels on the 1100 and 1200 block, pretty much all of them front onto San Carlos.
But for those, that was only the setback. It wasn't the actual elimination of the, of the floor, was it?
Yeah, so there's, there's two separate things that we're talking about here.
Yeah, so let's break those down.
Yes, we'll break those down.
So 600, 700, 800, remove a floor, and then 1100 and 1200, change the, and require the setback.
Correct.
Okay. Now, so let's, again, taking the 600, 700, 800, what is the rationale that EDAC provided? Excuse me, the, it wasn't EDAC, it was the City Council Economic Development Subcommittee, it was another acronym. What was their rationale for reducing the allowable height from four to three stories?
Well, I think, first of all, you know, they want to have it discussed and deliberated upon. And the concern is that the downtown historic core has always had a certain character and scale to it, right? The buildings are one- and two-story buildings primarily, and it's a different part of the city. It's a different part of the downtown. It looks and feels different. It's, it's the heart of the downtown. It's where everybody goes. Everybody knows it. It's almost like everybody's living room. So it's a different character and to, and the concern is, is that a building of four stories would really upset the char, the unique character of those, of the historic core of downtown San Carlos. And it's different than San Carlos Avenue, where you have a different, a wider street with more traffic, bigger buildings, and other areas of the community as well. And so it was an idea about how do we maintain the, the scale and massing of that historic area that we've always known as the retail core of our downtown.
So.
Go ahead.
Approximately how many potential units would there be if we made this change? I mean, just a ballpark, 100, 50, 20?
What do you mean, units? Do you mean, how many buildings are we talking about?
How many potential homes, or apartments, or condos, or whatever it is, would we be potentially, I mean, if you can, is there just like a ballpark?
Well, it would be more about square footage than it would be about density. The, the density would remain the same, so we're not, the, the general plan provides for the maximum density level, so that is not changing here. But it's more about square footage.
Okay.
And, you know, there is a leasable or rentable value for the square footage, and we do not have that number to provide to you this evening.
I mean, there's also, of course, the issue of parking, right? I mean, in that, in that area of Laurel Avenue, it's basically impossible to add parking. So, and so any, any development that added a fourth story basically would further impact the parking there in the, in the downtown core.
That's another significant concern as well, yes.
But we don't currently, we don't currently have any fourth, four-story buildings in that area?
No.
Okay. So then there was also the question as far as the, and it seemed like the speakers were primarily questioning, one, the rationale for eliminating the residential component on the fourth floor, and we're not talking about Laurel anymore. We're, we're talking about the mixed, all, and all of the mixed use.
Eliminating or just allowing for commercial?
Thank you, actually, that's absolutely right. So rather than requiring residential on the fourth floor, allowing residential on the fourth floor, but also allowing commercial. So what was the rationale for that change? And it seemed like some folks were scribbling on whether this was just cleanup, or whether this was more significant, and whether there were historical components that we weren't considering.
From what I heard from the commission right now, I think the commission understands it the way it was written in the staff report, but as, as, but based upon some of the comments we received, I'm not sure if the public is aware of what the change would actually mean. So thank you for the opportunity to further elaborate on that. I believe there was maybe a potential for misunderstanding that, you know, we wouldn't allow residential on the fourth story. That's not the case. Currently, the code said that only residential uses are allowed. So rather than limiting, limiting the fourth story to just residential uses, we just want it to be open up to other uses that are already permitted within the mixed-use zoning districts. So that means that you could choose to provide residential, or you could choose to provide offices or some other type of permitted use within the mixed-use district. So it just opens it up, rather than limiting it only to residential. And so that was the main reason behind the modification is we do not, we didn't want to limit it only to residential uses. I mean, if we look at the different, you know, stories, you know, you could take a look at the second story or the third story. We don't really regulate what needs to happen in those stories. So for the, for this, under the same logic, for the fourth story, we wanted to remove the residential-only land use limitation, so that it's just, could be either-or, based upon what a applicant may decide is the best use for the site, and what's obviously allowed for in the zoning ordinance.
So currently, what could happen is you could build a four-story building, and you could build three stories of offices, and you'd have to have the fourth story be residential instead of building an entire. But on the other hand, don't we want a mixed use? I mean, these are mixed-use districts, so do we want mixed use in the same building? Or is it mixed use looking at the entire area?
The way most of our mixed-use land use regulations read are such that there is not a requirement that a building needs to be all residential, or all commercial, or certain percentages of it be devoted to office and the remainder, you know, for residential. Our mixed-use zoning district is really flexible, you know, by intention. So, and I wasn't here at the time that the zoning ordinance was updated, but most of the times when you have this level of flexibility, it allows, you know, the market to decide what's needed in these areas, rather than constrain by land use. We do have some limitations that require the ground floor be devoted to certain uses in certain areas of the city. But other than that, it's really, you could propose a mixed use, that's offices are residential, or just office, or just residential, depending upon what district you're in. So within the spirit of that approach to mixed-use districts, we wanted to remove just the residential-only limitation for the fourth story, so that it's open up the same as for other stories within the mixed-use zoning districts.
Okay. And then I believe we also had a, some public comment about the commercial entertainment and recreation large scale. Basically, there was a question as to what that is going to be. And just so, this was not clear to me, we're really just talking about the, the strip of property that's along the rail corridor, basically, on the, on the east side of El Camino. Is that right?
That's correct. South of Arroyo, essentially.
And there, there are no existing plans right now for anything in particular, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, you know, I heard mention of a, like a theater, or something of that nature. And really, the property is so narrow at that point, it really limits the options of what could be built there. And it may be that it's more of an outdoor-type recreational use of some kind, as opposed to a building per se. So it could be anything, but we don't have a formal proposal at this time.
Are we talking about the same land that's probably going to be used for high-speed rail?
Well, I don't know if it would be used for high-speed rail or not, but it's an area, that area, I don't have a pointer, do I? Oh, I do. Okay. It's this area, so it is very narrow. And so the question that you bring up, I mean, theoretically, it could be used for high-speed rail, but it's viable land, and it's always been zoned as some kind of zoning for the city. It's, it's owned by, as you know, the Joint Powers Authority, and they, you know, have property rights just like a private citizen would have. So theoretically, I guess if, if there was, if we went to a four-rail, high-speed rail system, it may be that some of that land would needed to, would need to be used, but I don't think all of it. And so again, that provides another limitation on kind of what could happen there, but I don't think it completely eliminates what could potentially happen. One scenario, oddly enough, would be if there were raised tracks. I mean, with a high-speed rail, you just never know exactly what you're going to get. So if they did raised tracks, you could theoretically put a use underneath a track.
Okay. The other question I have is it's the area designated MUSB. The way I look at that, MUSB actually goes from Laurel Street all the way over. So you're not, your intention isn't to take the area between Laurel Street and El Camino and allow things there? Because that's the way it reads in, in the import, in the, in the.
Yeah.
Right. So the thing, yeah. Because the concern that I have is that you could now have a, I don't know, a.
Cinaflex. Yeah.
Drive-in theater down on the end of Laurel, or an amusement park, or a theme park. So I want to make sure that we, if, if you're really talking only the area along the east side of El Camino, that we make sure that we put that in here.
Yes. So as, if you decide to make a motion on that this evening, it would be good to specify exactly, it would be on El Camino, only on the east side of El Camino between, whatever, wherever, within that zone. So not on the other side of the street, on the west side of El Camino.
So that brings up my next question, which is, if it is just that small sliver of land, are we spot zoning? And that's a question for Mr. Rubens.
I think that, I don't think it would be spot zoning. Because spot zoning usually involves a major differential in zoning between that and surrounding zoning areas. And we are allowing for a CUP there that allows for these other types of uses. So I think you're, you're not really spot zoning in a classic sense here.
That's fine. I just wanted a legal opinion on that. And, and this, the last question I have on this particular one here is, when you look at the mixed-use NB, which is the North Boulevard, are we talking about only the area east of El Camino, or the area where there's currently hotels and shops and stuff? And, and.
Yeah.
Remind me what's, what's there currently?
There's Taco Bell and.
Taco Bell, hotel.
And Country Inn.
Country Union, okay. And so.
So it's already developed.
It's already developed and unlikely to be redeveloped anytime soon.
Okay. Does anyone have any additional questions for staff before we begin our discussion?
On anything or those particular items?
Can we take them one by one?
Sure. That's fine. So why don't we start with temporary uses requiring a temporary use permit to address tents? Why don't we do that one first? Does anyone have any questions for staff on temporary use permits to address tents?
Why, yes, I do. Yes, and I hope it's a silly question, I hope. But I just, just to clarify, when you say tents, you are talking large commercial tents? Or are you talking pop-up tents for, say, Christmas ornament storage that somebody might have in their backyard? And I read it, and I really didn't see it, that's why I'm honestly asking the question.
Right. So it would be for either. If it meets the definition, which is provided in the modification, you know, it doesn't really focus on the size or the purpose. It's just that if it meets the definition of an, of a tent, it would require a temporary use permit and further be allowed for only a maximum of 30 days over a 365-day time period.
So if somebody's kid wanted to put up a tent, they would be applying for a temporary use permit with the city of San Carlos?
I don't believe that's what it's intended to do for those, you know, small play tents that kids put up in their backyards. This is for the tents associated with maybe a special event, or maybe you're wanting to cover and enclose something for a temporary basis. Maybe there's some work being done on the property.
So if there's work being done on the property, or if they wanted to use the tent for, to say, cover their pergola during a rainstorm, they would apply for a permit?
They would need to, yes. But it's not intended for, you know, child, you know.
Not, not a.
Toy.
Toy tent.
Toy tents, correct. And if you like staff to put some clarification on that, I suppose we can work with the building official. Again, this relates to how it's defined from a structural standpoint, so we can definitely work with the building official to ensure that, you know, that that's clarified.
I mean, I guess my, my concern is, of course, thinking about each resident actually applying and spending money to erect essentially a tent in their backyard for something like, like a rainstorm, because maybe, maybe somebody on this dais did something like that, and, or covered it up. Would it be considered a tent? So I'm actually legitimately concerned about that. And get somebody out there to take care of the moat in my yard while you're at it. But I mean, I'm legitimately concerned.
I understand. I think it's a fair and reasonable question to ask.
And is that really necessary, that each resident apply for a, I mean, is that something we would want to do? Put something like that in?
The intent of this modification, again, is to address the issue of tents being kind of used in a more permanent fashion. And currently in the zoning ordinance, there wasn't anything to specifically address them directly. So the purpose and intent behind this modification is, number one, to define what we're talking about, and to ensure that they, you know, that there is a mechanism whereby they can be allowed, but allowed on a temporary basis, with the idea being that we don't want tents, you know, tents kind of popping up in different locations around the residential areas. We would prefer to see something, you know, that's, has more architecture done to, you know, kind of integrate with the existing structures on the property. So, I mean, we can always go back and, you know, maybe further elaborate on this, but, you know, I guess maybe one of the, one of the other things is we could, the other thing that tents are subject to are the provisions of accessory buildings and structures. So where they're located in terms of sightlines and visibility is an important thing to address as well. That's enough. That's another issue that's, you know, being addressed in this particular amendment. But the best method that we have to, to address the location and the duration of tents is through a temporary use permit.
Okay. I mean, it's, if that's its intention, that's fine. And I've just legitimately wanted to know.
I mean, I would assume that if somebody put up a tent temporarily, and if it's really that temporary, say, like you said, there's a big rainstorm, and you have to cover something up...
There's like a once in a 30-year rainstorm.
You're going to be taking it down by the time the city would find out about it. Again, it's really to address people using them on a more permanent basis.
Can I just add, just a point that sometimes comes up when you look at code sections in isolation like this, you can, you know, start to think about all kinds of different hypotheticals. But if you think about, basically, we're defining this code section, we're defining tents as a structure. They are a structure, and there's a good reason for that. Because, I'll create another hypothetical, what if somebody wanted to put a tent in their front yard? We don't, we don't allow tents to be permanent structures in people's front yards, and there's a reason for that, because they could be used for storage, they could be used for all kinds of the things that detract from the aesthetics of the community. So, but what you're talking about is sort of a temporary, you know, the kids camping in the backyard for a sleepover is, within the 30 days, it's not something that's, and I don't even think the language here requires actually a permit, it just says that it may be subject to approval by the fire marshal or the...
Okay.
The community development director.
Okay.
So in other words, if we, if we have somebody who's, who has such a structure within the setbacks or otherwise constructed that hasn't been approved, we have the discretion to do something about it if it's not those types of temporary uses.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I have one more clarification here? Lisa, during your description, you talked about a 30, 30 consecutive days, and then this actually talks about 30 days over a 365-day period. I just want to clarify which one it is.
You are correct. It's 30 days over a 365-day time period, not 30 consecutive days. And also, as the city attorney mentioned, it's considered a temporary use, but not necessarily subject to a temporary use permit. So hopefully, both those two items, those clarifications help. Thank you.
That was supposed to be the easy one.
I know. I'm sorry, guys. You're welcome.
Well, I would entertain a motion on tents. And I mean, I think that if you were to make such a motion, where's my motion?
I think that we may need to do this as a complete set.
I don't think so.
No? You want to do each one individually?
I, I think I do, actually. And I don't see any reason why we don't, why we can't do that, if council wants to tell me otherwise.
Well, we have in your packet, there's one resolution which, with several exhibits. So I think the, the way we've approached this in the past is sort of straw pulling on the different issues. And then when you get to the main motion of the resolution, you've, you've sort of decided those issues.
Okay.
And then, and there's going to be some deletions. Because of your earlier motion, you're going to have to actually modify some of the exhibits to remove the hotel references, so.
Okay. So do we have, I can, I can do a straw pull?
Nodding of the heads.
All right.
You're, basically, does anybody have any other questions or propose any modifications to the language for this one? And then if everyone says no, then you can move on to the next one.
All right. What he said.
No.
And I, and including modifications like, there's no way I'm going to vote for that.
No.
Don't go. Okay. So then next, the next easier one, how about the commercial and entertainment and recreational large scale? Does anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts on that one?
No, just your modifications of...
No, you helped answer that.
Other than the fact that we need to make sure that we include the east side of El Camino.
Okay. All right.
For both, both areas.
So then let's, let's next go to reducing the maximum number of stories and building height for parcels fronting Laurel Street along 600, 700, and 800 blocks only.
And it's silent. So can I ask a question?
Yes.
Of staff? Was the consideration of a setback on the fourth floor discussed?
I think it's already in the code.
It's already in the code.
Yeah.
Can I ask another question? Are the buildings in those blocks covered by any other ordinance in the, I understand some of them are historic. I mean, are there other things already saying they had to go through certain hoops before they're modified?
Any kind of new construction would require a design review, and it would be reviewed by this commission.
Okay. But they're not technically a historical structure, as in registered historically? We just consider them historical by the nature?
I just don't have that level of knowledge to know for sure, but it could be that there, there may be a building in downtown that's on the 1991 historical list that was done at that time. But I can't confirm for sure.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Wouldn't redo, re, or rebuilding one of these buildings trigger a requirement for them to provide parking?
Yes.
Provide what?
Parking.
Parking. So any other questions, comments, thoughts on, on this one?
I'm not that clear as to why we're only 600, 700, and 800 block. I mean, I understand the zoning district, but I'm not quite sure why we stopped at 800 and didn't go to 900 or 1,000.
Well, I think if you look at the, if you look at the map again on the screen, when you get past the 800 block, you get to Olive Street, right? Where you have B and Kenny's Market, there's the post office, right? Right across the street. I'm sorry.
Yeah, 800.
Right here. But that's the 800 block right there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right. So you're saying, why didn't we go past that?
Yeah, besides the zoning district, I mean, why, what triggered off 800 being the stopping point of that? And I'm kind of going back to some of the other, and we approved something on the 900 block already. But I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the thought process behind that.
And again, that, that area, that purple area has always been considered the historic downtown core, the retail core of the city. So that's why it's a different color. It's always been, it's, you know, if you go back into the, if you look at pictures from the 50s or the 70s, or, you know, even farther back, you know, these first few blocks from the train station up San Carlos to Laurel Street and down just three blocks or so have been sort of the downtown. That was what kind of started our downtown community here in, in San Carlos. So it's always been viewed as, again, where everybody went, it was the central heart of our, you know, culture, society, our retail activities. So that's why it's different, and it's always remained sort of a lower-scale area. And, and I was, I shared a story with the chair earlier in that, a few years ago, we had a group of experts come through San Carlos called the Urban Land Institute, and they came as a team. We asked them to come and take a look at our city. They were looking at a few cities in the Bay Area. And what they did is they sort of did an assessment of our community, what are the opportunities, constraints, the good things that we have here. And one of the things that, and they're made up of architects, developers, economists, so a group of experts that were put together. And they came and they did a study, and I believe that it is probably somewhere on our website. And they looked at our, our city, and they, and they said the, the El Camino is where, you know, you ought to have the density. It's kind of like we've grown organically the right way. And they said about those blocks, about that historic core, they said that, that a lot of communities across the country would love to have what we have in terms of the scale and the feeling and the character of those, of those, of that historic core, and that we should be careful as a community when we do things particularly on that Laurel Street frontage. So it wasn't, it's not just staff that's saying it, or sort of what we know about our history. There's people from the outside that are kind of acknowledging the uniqueness and the historic nature of this area that we call our downtown historic core. So that, it is different, I think.
So is that in fact a new building, any new development that happens, or is there any grandfather for people, people that have the property now? I mean, how does that work? Because I'm thinking of the, the property owner that has the expectation of having, I mean, I want to keep our, I want to maintain our downtown, but there's also property owner rights as well. It's just, you know, what, what they bought versus what they get. Is there, how, how is that reconciled? Is there, is it just, would it just be arbitrary that there would no, there would be no longer four, four stories? And has that always been that way? Or is that, was it recently increased to four stories, and now we're thinking about reducing it back down to three?
I mean, I, I think it was historically four-story. It could have been, you know, to be quite frank, I don't know for sure. I can't, I don't recall for sure.
Okay.
But it doesn't, but this would not guarantee them, you know, hey, you can, since you've owned it for, for this long, you can go to four stories. This would limit any future development on a property to three stories.
Okay.
Can I throw out a suggestion? How would you feel about making the fourth story a conditional use?
Conditional use?
That would mean if you did a fourth story, you would have to come back to the planning commission. So essentially, you'd have to justify why you want the fourth story. It's, it's more burdensome, burdensome on the property owner, but it gives them the opportunity and the ability to come and say, this is how I want to make it fit in with the, with the downtown.
That may be...
I mean, it's definitely a creative way of doing it.
What does staff have to say about that suggestion?
I think what does council have to say about it?
I think it's, I think it's a decent compromise, because what a CUP does, a conditional use permit does, is it allows the city to have discretion over that fourth story. So I think if, if the, if the commission is struggling with, you know, just eliminating it altogether, and that you want to find some kind of a middle ground where the city has discretion, and at the same time, the, the property owner has an opportunity to present a case to the, to the planning commission, then you do have the discretion to make findings whether or not you think it fits in with the community or not.
I have another question. I guess it, forgive me if it goes along the same line of my previous question, but I'm curious if we have additional scrutiny during design review when something comes up on those particular blocks? Not just the height of the buildings, but material used, other things like that. I guess in my mind, I'm thinking specifically about the building that town occupies, it has a brick nature to it. I really like that, for example. Would we have, do we have the ability to, I know we always have the ability to suggest building materials, but is that some, is that codified more somewhere because it's our historical core?
The zoning ordinance does have specific regulations to the use of some materials, but not necessarily, per se, to the facade, the skin of the facade, as you were discussing. However, when an application is submitted that requires a design review permit, which any new construction on Laurel would require a design review, that application is subject to the long list of design review criteria that's embedded into the zoning ordinance.
But there's nothing specific for those blocks or anything?
No design guidelines, per se, but we, but they still have the design review criteria.
Right.
And if I might add, the findings are different. So that, that's what differentiates a design review permit from a conditional use permit. So there are two different sets of eyes that you have. One is more of a, you know, architectural design, mass and scale. The other is more about character, how it affects the, the community and the use, and that kind of thing, and impact on other businesses in the, in the downtown as well. So with those two things, you have, you know, a lot of, some good ways to sort of grapple with this and, and look at it in different ways and make different findings.
And so it would only be a conditional use permit on the fourth floor?
I like that idea, yeah. Okay. Anything else on that one? Just, I just noticed something extremely minor, which, on the tents issue, I, on page nine, it says it's...
Did you say on the tents issue?
Tents.
Oh, good.
That it, it says section 8, 18.24, .240, but it's actually 23.240. It's correct in the actual ordinance change. And I, I was just thinking about your comments, and I was thinking that maybe if it's something you felt strongly about, you might, you might ask that when it's codified, that it be codified with an exception for, you know, the residential districts for, for tents less than 48 hours or something, if you want, if you wanted to. Okay. So then, moving on to 5B, doesn't actually have a B, which is the step, setbacks on the 1100 and 1200 blocks of San Carlos, basically requiring those blocks to have the fourth story step back like everywhere, step back like everywhere else. Does anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns about that?
I don't.
No?
No.
Okay. And then, so finally, the last one is removing the land use regulation that requires the fourth story of all buildings in mixed-use zoning districts be restricted to residential uses only.
I mean, I think I echo some of the, it's so silly, but it almost just feels like you're discouraging residential use, even though I know that's not what this is intended to do or what this necessarily does. And so I guess my question might be, instead of, instead of the fourth-floor residential requirement, could we just require a residential requirement? I mean, could it flip and go somewhere else on a different floor? Because it doesn't really have to be the fourth floor, does it? Could be the second floor.
Well, I think the concern is, mixed use means multiple things. It means it could be retail office, it could be retail residential, it could be all three of them.
No, I understand. Yeah.
It could also mean one building here is residential, and the building next to it could be office.
Is all office, yeah.
And so if you limit this to residential on everything, you may have to build a three-story office building and then put residential on the top.
I like that. I know. That, I, I fully understand it, believe me.
I, I mean...
I, and it's, I can be convinced. I'm just...
My, my big concern with this is that I keep hearing this housing and jobs imbalance, okay? And I think in San Mateo County, there's a huge jobs, housing imbalance. But when I look at the numbers for San Carlos, we're almost equal in the number of jobs and housing that we provide. We've done an excellent job in, in, in actually balancing those two over the years. And so I keep hearing that we've got to provide more and more housing, and I think what we need to provide is affordable housing, not necessarily more housing overall. And so I, that's, that's my, the, the concern that I have here is where we may be using this to force housing where it may not be the best fit for housing.
That's why I asked how many units were in, in process, or, you know, that we're looking at already, because I wanted to get an idea of what, you know, how we're addressing housing. And if we, if we had a handle on it, then I would not be as concerned about opening this up.
I also just genuinely like individual mixed-use buildings, and I think that's, that's part of my hesitation. Again, it's, it's not so strong that I'm not willing to vote, it's just something I've wanted to address.
Convince me housing. Why, why do we have to have housing on the fourth floor? Because I, I'm not convinced either way yet, either. Because I, I'm not convinced either way yet, either. I'm sort of leaning towards, you know, not having the requirement for housing, but I want to hear sort of a, a better justification for why it has to be housing on every fourth floor.
I think, A, just from the, from the actual individual building perspective, and this isn't San Carlos specific, I personally like mixed-use buildings. I think they create an, an interesting atmosphere. A great, a great multi-use building that then works with other buildings to have, to have people living right where the action is in town. So I genuinely like mixed-use buildings that include residential, completely separate from our housing issue. But I will say that I think the peninsula housing issue is, is significant. And people in San Carlos continue to produce new people, just like everybody else in the peninsula. And I think that when we look trajectory-wise, I don't think there's any doubt we're going to be in need of housing. More housing in San Carlos and more housing in the peninsula. I'm not going to win any debate team awards for that.
That's okay.
Amazing.
Housing good.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. I know.
And one of the speakers talked about, you know, the flexibility of, of parking for these things, where you have a mixed unit, a mix of housing and, or residential, housing and commercial, or housing and office, so that there is a shared parking component of it.
Yeah.
So I can, I can see.
That's a much better argument than what I made.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay. I'm just, I, I want to talk about all the different possibilities here.
Is there any more talking about possibilities? Or are we, are we ready for a motion? I don't want to cut off discussion or hit myself with a microphone.
I'm sorry, there is, there is one more thing, and I don't know that it's applicable to this.
Do not talk about tents, please.
When we do our retreat, you will all be staying in tents in my backyard. I will get a permit. But it is something that, that I think is something we need to bring up at some point, so I just wanted to say it now. Talking about the hotel and the noticing situation that happened, last time we talked about zoning ordinance cleanup, and I think I was chair at this point, I had actually asked, admittedly in the 11th hour, if we should increase our noticing radius. And that isn't something that we really talked about, much beyond saying, we admitted that we'd heard a lot of issues from anybody in any part of town about, about our noticing radius. So I'm wondering if this might be something that we should discuss and look into further, perhaps at another meeting.
And I agree with you, because I have four or five additional items that I think that we should have discussions about as far as the, the zoning ordinance. And so I think those items would be appropriate for you and I to submit to staff, so that they can bring, be brought forward when we bring forward the hotels issue.
Fair point.
Okay?
Okay. So at this point, I think we're probably ready for a motion. And the motion as it is, is on page 11. It's also up there, I guess. Now, obviously, whoever's going to make this motion is going to have to remember all of the modifications. And that's a challenge, but I will entertain that motion.
So just to, just to kind of put it out, we're.
This is what I think we agreed to.
I think, yes, go ahead, no.
I think that we agreed to, to table the hotels and the motels for another time, to allow commercial entertainment and recreation in large scale with the express limitation that it only applies on the east side of El Camino Real. That we would be removing the land use regulation that requires the fourth story of all buildings in mixed-use zoning to be restricted to residential uses only with no changes. That we would not be reducing the maximum number of stories in building height for parcels fronting Laurel Street along the 600 and 700 and 800 blocks only, but we would be requiring a conditional use permit for anyone who wished to go to the fourth floor. That we were going to add to the zoning ordinance, a requirement of a conditional use permit for tents. And that possibly someone might be making a, a, a change that excluded, excluded the residential zoned areas for tents that were there for less than 48 hours. And finally, that we were making the change to the 11, I think it's 1100 and 1200 block of.
As a part of four?
It was, it's actually, it's right after five.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. It's, I lost it.
So what, the setbacks on the 1100 block?
Yeah.
For San Carlos?
Yeah, there was the 1100 and 1200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue, that the step setbacks be required for that area as well. So I think that's, I think that's what we, that's the way we're leaning. If someone wants to make that motion, I think they probably could just incorporate what I said, if they were so inclined.
Yeah, what David said.
And would that, would that include a, a limitation on the tents? Or not? What do you want to do with the tents?
That'd be nice, 48 hours. I, I don't think anybody meant for.
What if you have a three-day weekend?
Are you proposing 72 hours on the residential?
I'm just thinking all the possibilities. What do you, you know, are we going to go after kids in the backyard that, that have a tent for three days?
Uh, yes.
I'm kidding, no.
It's your call, folks. Go ahead and, and indicate what the motion includes, sir.
I, I think just as written. I don't, I don't have an issue with the way it's written.
Okay.
Angela?
Um.
I'm not getting a second for me, huh?
I think there's some of us who are still thinking about the fourth floor.
Yeah, sorry, guys.
Oh.
What? Well, there, there is a, there.
There's a motion.
There is a motion. It's unclear what the status of the motion is with respect to tents, but there is a motion. No one's seconded it yet. I would suggest that someone clarify the issue of tents. We get a second, and then we can discuss whether there are going to be any more modifications.
I'm, I'm fine with the.
Okay, so the motion is, is, as I said, with, with no tents without a, without a permit. So is there a second for that motion? I would suggest that someone second the motion, and then we can continue to have discussion before we vote.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to, I just want to clarify that a permit is not necessarily required for the tent.
Right.
I think we should ignore the tent.
Yeah.
I don't want to, I don't want to argue it for you, but it's being listed in, that's why I was looking at 8.23.240. Well, but I'm looking at the actual ordinance. It says, "This section establishes standards for certain uses that are intended to be of limited duration of time that will, will not permanently alter the character or physical facilities of the site where they occur." And this is going under B, temporary uses requiring a temporary use permit. Other temporary uses may be permitted pursuant to chapter 18.31, temporary, temporary use permits, subject to the following standards. So, I mean, if it's going in, if it's going in, and I hate to actually read the ordinance, but if it's going in 18.23.24 subsection B, it requires a, it requires a temporary use permit. I mean, I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, okay. We'll go back to the whole ordinance as opposed to that.
I'm sorry, you know, you're talking to a lawyer. I had to look at the whole code.
So then would we want?
Could you quote that section, please, Mr. Chairman, one more time?
It's, uh, so the, according to our packet.
The number of the section?
18.23.24 subsection B, temporary uses requiring a temporary use permit. This is adding a subsection four for tents.
240 or 240?
240.
Uh, page 310.
Or 309.
Maybe it's, it's. Yeah, so the numbering is wrong. Okay. Here it is, got it, yes. So it's 315 on Y. So, so, section.
Correction.
So it goes under temporarys requiring a temporary use permit.
May be required.
Maybe it should be 18.23. Hold on.
Yeah.
Section four. Sorry, folks, we usually don't have this much problem over tents.
Yeah. This tent thing is really taking my motion off the table.
Somebody else make a motion.
So it's.
It's under B?
B.
Oh, we put it under B.
B. And then one, two, three.
I still have a decision.
Other use still.
No, I mean, you're right.
It's hard when they're all together. Yeah, yeah. I don't know whether, I think we need to take sort of a straw poll.
On what tents?
Yeah, but here, it doesn't say.
The fourth floor residential.
The conditional use permit, your own suggestion?
Yeah.
You're, you're troubled by.
Not that one, not the conditional use permit.
The setback?
The, the, we never really did sort of say which direction people were leaning.
It does say required.
I had an impression.
Okay.
So maybe we put it under the section.
Maybe do it for.
Okay. Let's read each one real quick. I think you're, I mean, I think you're, I think you're right on, but.
Okay. Yes, he does.
I think, yeah, I think there needs to be an exception in here, right? Because it really, this does mean that is maybe subject to.
It does say temporary uses requiring a CUP.
Hotels tonight, we're not doing hotels.
Versus not requiring temporary.
Can't get past tents. Can't get past tents.
We're going to create a, we're going to, oh, we're going to create a tent village of hotels. You know, it's going to be, you can rent a, it's your kind of concept, you know?
I like that.
I guess, can we suggest a rewriting of this thing?
All right. So should we offer the option of moving into the section above? Yeah, okay. Mr. Chairman, okay.
Yes.
So here, here it goes. Yes, we believe you're correct in that, in that section, it does say that, under B, temporary uses requiring a temporary use permit in B. However, the section right before it says temporary uses not requiring a temporary use permit. So this tent language could be moved into that section. So it depends on what the planning commission intends or feels more comfortable with. Either you require it, or you just say that it's a limitation, you can't go over 30 days.
Again, I don't want, I'm sitting as a planning commissioner, I'll tell you, if I were interpreting the Muni Code, and you stick it in A, to me, that means that it's never required for a tent. And if you stick it in B, it's always required.
Yes.
That's how I read it. So if you stick it in A, you're basically doing nothing. And if you stick it in B.
It's still a regulation, and if, if it can be determined that you've gone over 30 days, let's say, then the city does, can have code enforcement action, carry out code enforcement action against that.
I would like to stick it in A.
That was just recorded, just so you know.
Could I just add something? This is just where you need to be careful, and that's the point I was making.
And it is hard to read these sections in isolation when you don't have the whole code in front of you, obviously. But you have to really be careful about whether or not you want to allow tents as a permit, basically no permit required for 30 days in all zoning districts of the city. I mean, I, I mean, right now, without, without this change, the city attorney, somebody erects a tent, and I'll use the, an extreme example, in their front yard, and says, "My guests are going to live in this tent for a week or a month."
15, 0.
I won't have the ability to go in and do a code enforcement in that scenario, because it's, it's allowed. Where, what, where I was interpreting it is, there was a qualification in here, that it's allowed as a temporary use with, with an approval by the fire marshal or the community development director. I just want to make sure you understand, moving it to A or B, what, what that does in the context of the codes.
Well, then is there a better alternative? Because I see keeping it in B as anybody who erects any tent for a sleepover needs to get a temporary use permit.
I was suggesting you consider limiting it to, in residential districts for some time period.
Which I could do, but then that goes back to Greg's point of, I guess they can put it in the front yard, then?
Yeah, for, for 24 hours or 48 hours, yeah.
If, if that, if that solves the problem, then, then yes, let's add language that says it's an exception or an exemption for 72 hours.
Is there, does anyone have any significant concerns about that addition?
No, but I'm, I'm certainly worried about if we need housing for some unknown reason to provide people in tents. And there isn't a option for more than 30 days. I'm thinking homeless, I'm thinking, you know, people who might need temporary housing for a short amount of time, and how would they, how would they fit into this idea of tents?
Mr. Marsters, are you talking about a natural disaster or, or man-made disaster?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a disaster or, or what. I'm just thinking, worst-case scenario, if we needed to, to, you know, a building burnt down and we needed to provide some temporary housing for somebody, you know, or because they're homeless. How do we address that?
I mean, can I, I really don't. I mean, it's a really, it's a legitimate point, Scott. When we were talking before about having an ordinance code that was constantly going to get violated, that concerned me. And the idea that kids couldn't set up a tent in the backyard without violating the ordinance concerned me, which is why I think that an addition is necessary. Unusual situations that may very well not occur, I mean, I think we need to trust the city, that if there's a natural disaster or someone has a serious problem and they need to have a tent in their backyard for 31 days, the city is not going to immediately file a code enforcement action. I, I mean, I really, I mean, it's a legitimate point, but I think we can table that one.
Okay.
I, I don't think it's a real, it's, it's a theoretical concern, which I like, but probably not a practical one. But there was a request, so I think we've got the tent thing settled, I think we've got the motion basically together. But there was a request that we just go back very quickly to the issue of the requirement of eliminating the requirement that the fourth story in mixed-use be residential. I was under the impression that there was a general consensus to eliminate that requirement, but someone was indicating that they thought that there wasn't. If anyone has some strong concerns about eliminating that as a requirement, if you could state that now.
I mean, I've already expressed my concerns about, about it, and I get the sense I'm outnumbered, and like I said, it was a.
I got the sense you were outnumbered as well.
Right.
So is.
I'm sort of on the fence there.
Okay, well, one, one no and one on the fence. Is anyone else? And I think that we've got a motion. The motion is how, I, I believe that it was made by Mr. Gutierrez, reflected what I, what I said with the motto. was made by Mr. Gutierrez, reflected what I, what I said with the modification that Ms. Harper Peterson made with respect to residential, um, residential, residential parcels and tents that are, are there for less than-
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours. So that's the motion, um, is there a second?
Wait, go on a second. Are we talking about residential, single-family homes?
We're talking about those, um, those areas that are zoned residential, so it's anything with an RS. So I think there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, is there any further discussion? So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so it's four-one, it passes, um, the matter is concluded. Thank you for those who came on this matter, we're now going to turn our attention to six A, and I'm going to reopen, uh, the public hearing, I don't think I need a vote for that unless I'm mistaken. Okay, so we're gonna reopen the public hearing, the, the prior instructions that I gave at the beginning of the meeting with respect to public hearings are still in place, and they include everything I mentioned, I just want to reiterate that, uh, that if you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice or unwritten correspondence, uh, delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So do we have a presentation on six A?
Good evening, I'll be making this presentation again. Not again, but making a presentation again on this item. Good evening, Chair Commissioners. The item before you, um, the second item on your agenda, is the preliminary draft housing element. As most folks are aware, all cities and counties are required by the State Department of Housing and Community Development to periodically update their general plan housing element to respond to current and future housing needs. This draft housing element covers a planning period between two thousand and fifteen through to twenty twenty-three, and the purpose of this meeting tonight is to provide the planning commission and the public with an opportunity to review and discuss the preliminary draft before it's submitted to the state for its review. Following tonight's meeting, uh, the city council will receive a similar presentation and report, um, but it will include any comments that are made from this meeting tonight, and it will be discussed at city council next Monday, January the twelfth. Thereafter, our staff expects to be able to forward the document to the State Department of Housing and Community Development so they can begin, um, their formal review. So, the purpose of the housing element, um, just to go back for a minute, this is gonna be a little bit of background and then content of the draft housing element that you have received prior to the break. The purpose of the housing element, um, essentially, they've been required since nineteen sixty-nine by the state as part of the state's overall goal for decent and suitable living environments for every California family, which is critical to the state's overall long-term economic competitiveness. One key thing to remember is that the housing element is part of the general plan, so while it's, it's, you know, own unique policy document and subject to review and certification by the state, it also requires consistency with the general plan itself. Now, the required housing element components, um, are the following. The state requires that every housing element include six primary components that are shown here on the slide. Housing elements are required to evaluate, um, previous housing elements, so it involves review of the plan's previous programs and objectives, and discusses how well, um, the city, um, did in, in accomplishing some of those prior objectives. The second consists of what is called a housing needs assessment, and that focuses on the city's existing housing needs based upon the characteristics of the community and the existing housing stock within the city. It also includes, um, the regional housing needs allocation, otherwise known as RENA, which represents the city of San Carlos's fair share of the Bay Area's projected housing growth. In addition, a vacant and underli, underutilized land inventory, land inventory is also required, and it must list all parcels that are vacant and considered to be underutilized, and this is a key part of the housing element because it determines if the city's existing land use regulations or zoning can accommodate the regional housing needs, um, projection. The housing element must also identify constraints, constraints such as those related to zoning, um, standards, land use and development standards, um, fees, permitting procedures, as well as the cost of land and construction costs, so it includes a discussion on constraints. It also is required to have what is called quantified objectives, and basically what this is, is developing a reasonable estimate of the number of unit, new units, um, that can be constructed, units that would be conserved and rehabilitated as part of, um, the plan's overall horizon relative to its proposed policies and actions. And then finally, um, the plan must have goals, policies, and action items, um, which are very much the heart of the document. So the kickoff to every new housing element begins, um, with the regional housing needs assessment, and all throughout the state, every city and county must show that it can accommodate its regional housing needs allocation or the RENA over the projected planning period. And the RENA, uh, number is broken down into different income categories, um, these income categories have also been set and defined by the state. So basically, what this slide depicts here is that the number of new units that we need to accommodate, meaning we have to have the zoning, um, in place if the market would like to provide them, is enough land, um, at, with the right zoning in place, um, for five hundred and ninety-six new units, um, over, uh, the course of eight years. Um, and it could occur any time within the eight years, but it is for the eight-year, um, planning, um, horizon again, which is, um, twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three. And one thing I wanted, um, to note, and sometimes, um, this can get, um, misunderstood, is that the RENA, the housing needs allocation is not additive, meaning whatever wasn't accomplished during the last cycle isn't automatically added to this year's number. This year's, the, the current, um, RENA number, um, is for the planning period and is not meant to be additive. So I would just wanted to make that clear. So what do we mean by affordable? What income ranges are defined under the affordability provisions, um, set by the state? This slide here shows, um, income levels based upon the number of persons, uh, per household. So, um, we look at the San Mateo County income limits to determine, um, what is, um, determined to be the area median income, which is pretty much the common denominator for determining what is classified as extremely low, very low, low, um, or moderate income housing. So for example, um, in this slide here, you can see that for a three-person household, um, with a maximum income category of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty, would be falling under the very low income category. So it's based upon household size. So in terms of, um, what households in the city, um, would be eligible for affordable housing, we can see here in this slide that roughly thirty-eight percent of all households in the city would fall under the extremely low, very low, low or moderate income category, and the remaining sixty-two percent, um, would be above moderate, um, would ha, excuse me, has above moderate, um, income levels. So facts and figures, um, such as this one, and all other socioeconomic data, is a required part of the housing element, and, um, all of this information has been updated and included in the housing element under a section titled Housing Conditions and Trends, which begins on page forty-seven, um, of the document. So speaking of demographic data, um, I think this is an interesting, um, chart here. Basically, this is showing the overall growth and the number of persons turning sixty-five since the year nineteen ninety-six. And so since nineteen ninety-six, as you can see here, the projected number of, of persons turning, um, sixty, uh, turning sixty-five, um, through the year twenty twenty-five, there's essentially been a steady rise in the over, on, overall number of that particular demographic. And of course, this reflects the well-known aging of the baby boomers who may no, no longer be at their highest, um, earning potential and could be living off of fixed incomes. And so I think this is interesting to point out and is, um, likely one of the reasons for the higher, um, RENA numbers in the very low and low income categories as a result of this, um, demographic, um, shift occurring, not only in San Carlos, but everywhere. In terms of residential building types, um, the majority of homes in San Carlos are single-family, as this chart shows here, seventy percent of the residential housing stock is comprised by single-family detached homes, with the remainder, you know, occurring in groups of three to four, five to nine, ten to nineteen, or twenty or more units. And the lowest percentage, um, of residential housing types are in fact, um, second units occurring at only one percent of the overall housing stock. And so since second units are required to be permitted by right under state housing law, um, the seventy percent of the area that is devoted to single-family, you know, are a great potential or opportunity area for additional second units to occur within our city. So that's, um, you know, a large amount of untapped potential to, um, look at the possibilities for second units in these areas. And, um, therefore, that's one of the reasons why there are specific goals and policies in the housing element that focus in on the second unit, um, provisions for this very reason. Um, and in fact, there is an additional, um, new, um, action item found on page twenty-two of the draft that contemplates, um, looking at additional opportunities for more second units to be built within the city. So I mentioned before that goals, housing, excuse me, goals, um, policies and actions are a required part of the housing element, and of these, um, goals, policies, and actions, um, the housing element is required to focus on specific items for these, surrounding these policy, um, issues. So the programs are essentially the goals, policies, and action items in the plan. And what the state says is that you need to develop programs around seven, uh, unique areas, and these are the following, you need to, um, write programs that ensure there's adequate sites for housing needs, there needs to be programs that, um, provide for some type of assistance and the assistance, um, that go towards development of adequate housing. Policies need to address any constraints that may be existing within the city and actions to remove those constraints. There also needs to be programs to conserve and improve the condition of our existing affordable housing stock that we currently have in the city, programs that preserve the affordable units that may be at risk to converting to market rate. And we also need to have programs, um, that promote equal housing opportunities, as well as programs, um, to address, um, meeting our quantified objectives. The goals, policies, and actions for, within the preliminary draft, um, began on page fifteen, and within that area, you can see them, um, in, um, underline and strikeout edits. So, our current housing element, um, was adopted in October of the year two thousand and nine, along with the general plan, and it's a very good document, it's actually very, uh, it's a very proactive policy document that encouraged and supported the production of affordable housing. And so with that, uh, solid foundation in place, the overall approach, um, for moving forward to update the housing element was to really build upon the strengths of the existing housing element that's currently in place. We looked at making improvements where we could, and, but we also looked very closely at what has changed since two thousand and nine to ensure whatever revisions were going to be made to the goals, policies, and programs were meaningful and also reflective of our current needs. In terms of, um, civic engagement and outreach, um, the, um, overall process of the housing element, um, does require that staff reach out to, um, stakeholder groups, and, um, we did that. We reached out, um, through, to a wide range of different audiences. The first being that San Carlos is part of a countywide collaboration known as Twenty-One Elements, whereby the title refers to all of the twenty-one different jurisdictions within San Mateo County, who all happen to be, um, updating their housing elements, um, as required by the state. We're all on the same timeline for that, um, so it was, um, a process, I think, that began several housing elements before and has worked very well, and so San Carlos continues to be part of that process. And so that, through the Twenty-One Elements process, planners and representatives from different regional housing agencies, um, advocacy groups, and nonprofit organizations met on a regular basis to highlight the issues facing affordable housing, and also what issues faced, um, you know, low-income families. And in addition to all of that information, good information and input received through the Twenty-One Element process, um, here specifically in San Carlos, we reached out, um, to residents within our community and also, um, other stakeholders, um, that are not, um, in our community. And we held several workshops, and these workshops began, um, in March, and we had a few more, um, during, I believe, the month of September of last year. We also took the conversation, um, to the web, and we used the city's new, uh, Shape San Carlos internet, internet-based platform to have an online conversation. So everything collected through the Twenty-One Elements, um, as well as with workshops and, um, public comments that were made under Shape San Carlos, um, are included, um, as an attachment, under attachment one, uh, to the staff report, and some of the highlights of the comments received are noted, um, in the staff report. One of the items, um, I wanted to mention notably is, um, the best practices policy document that was prepared by the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County, um, with assistance by many other organizations. This is actually, um, in your, um, packet of information, is, as you can see, it's a very long document with a lot of, um, different policy recommendations that, um, were being asked of the city to comp the template, um, during the update. Because there were so many, and because this was, um, a very comprehensive and, um, directed, um, document addressed to staff for us to look at, for the city to look at, we provided, um, a, a matrix, basically, the matrix is found under attachment four, whereby we list all of the policy, um, recommendations provided by, um, the Housing Leadership Council, um, with responses to those. And there are a lot of, um, policy recommendations that, um, we actually are already doing and maybe already accomplished, um, with the zoning ordinance update that was, um, adopted by council in two thousand and eleven. But there are others, um, such as rent stabilization, um, commercial linkage fee, um, that were also, um, new to the conversation for this housing element update cycle, um, and we also wanted to make note of those because we see, we received a couple of comments from different individuals on those topics. So that's all outlined and hopefully is useful to you so you can really kind of get behind some of the com, comments and the conversation that was occurring as part of the overall update. So specifically, with respect, um, to those updates that we've made, um, page four of the staff report describes, um, the changes proposed to the current housing element goals, policies, and objectives. And in addition, um, I wanted to point out that there is an attachment, attachment number four, that includes policies to address home sharing. Um, this was something that was recommended by one of the housing advocacy groups is to, which was to, you know, ask the city of San Carlos to consider promoting the concept of home sharing. And unfortunately, it was inadvertently, didn't make it into the preliminary draft, so I wanted to call, um, that out specifically. So the intent is to, um, have that language incorporated into the preliminary draft by the time it, um, gets forwarded, um, to the state. So basically, what do the updates consist of? Well, they consist of, um, a little bit of, um, I guess, housekeeping, to better identify the issues of existing policies. As you know, in the preliminary draft, um, there is a kind of like a, one phrase, um, opening statement at the beginning of each policy statement, just to make it easier to identify what we're referring to in that particular policy or program. We also have, um, updated policies, um, and actions that are shown in redlined, strikeout, and underlined. We updated the housing conditions and trends, which I mentioned before, which largely consists of the housing needs assessment, and in fact, this was something that we were able to, um, achieve, um, early on in the process, and by virtue of being involved in the Twenty-One Elements, um, collaborative, uh, process, we were able to forward that to the state. So in fact, the state has already began reviewing a portion of our preliminary draft already, which consists of the housing conditions and trends. We also, um, updated our- We also updated our accomplishments for the 2007 through 2014 housing element cycle. That's included in the update. The update, obviously by nature, needs to include the updated regional housing needs allocation numbers. And we also updated the section which describes the number of new units that have already been approved or are currently underway through the entitlement process. It also includes an update to the land inventory. Some land that was previously vacant, you know, has now been developed, so that needed to come off the table. But for the most part, the land inventory was reviewed parcel by parcel, and there is a list of each and every one of these parcels along with their APN and current use in the document itself, and that's a requirement by the state. We need to have that level of detail. We also updated the section on constraints, as I mentioned before, whether those were governmental constraints of a regulatory nature or constraints relative to the cost of construction and the cost of land. So those are the primary sections that have been updated in the housing element. One item that is new and wasn't discussed in the housing element specifically is a revision to Action HOU 1.7. Now, this is a new action that staff is recommending be incorporated into the housing element to address displacement of lower-income residents. We had the opportunity to review this language with the, actually, one of the staff persons from the Housing Leadership Council, who had suggested that we incorporate a new action item to address displacement of lower-income residents. So basically, what I want to provide you with here is a modification to what's currently in the housing, the preliminary draft housing element. And basically, it's not in redlined, strikeout. It essentially reads pretty much the same. The focus, however, shifts from using the 21 Elements process to come up with a series of recommendations for anti-displacement and instead puts the emphasis on the city will look into this, rather than relying on 21 Elements. And at the bottom, it says that if possible, you know, please coordinate with other jurisdictions and, you know, under the umbrella of the work to be undertaken by 21 Elements. So if you kind of look at that more closely, it's just a little bit of a shift to really put more emphasis that the city will take action and not necessarily rely on the 21 Elements update process. Other than that, it achieves the same objective. Now, for the next steps involved with the achieving certification by the state, as I mentioned before, this graphic shows, you know, obviously, we're here tonight discussing the preliminary draft. The preliminary draft will be presented to the city council next Monday, and then thereafter, pending any direction received by the city council, we will prepare the preliminary draft to be submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development so that they can begin their maximum 60-day review. It could be done in a lesser amount of time, but we are looking at the maximum time the HCD affords themselves to review all the different jurisdictions' housing elements. So basically, what that means is that we would be back with a finalized draft to review as part of the more formal adoption process, most likely in April of this year. So pending any comments received from HCD, whether those are, you know, minor modifications or clarifications or additional explanations that they want us to include in the draft, we would prepare those and then present a further revised housing element, should we need to, pending HCD's comments, to the Planning Commission in April, followed by city council for the formal adoption process. And thereafter, it goes back to the state so that we can show the state that we adopted it, and then they would submit to the city a formal certification letter. So the recommendation that staff, you know, has put together before you is simply to receive this preliminary draft to let us know if you have any comments that you would like us to forward on to the city council prior to sending the document to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for review. This concludes staff's presentation, and this slide here just shows that we have several of us here available to answer any questions you may have. Our consultant from Baird &amp; Driscoll, Jeff Baird, is also with us tonight, as well as Sam Hughes, who also assisted with some of the financial aspects and policies related to the housing element update. Thank you.
Okay. So we have one request to speak from Mr. Krab. If anyone else intends to speak on this item, if you don't mind filling out a speaker slip, that'll be helpful.
Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission, I apologize for the handing out this letter that you haven't seen before. I take responsibility, and I've been remiss in doing my homework on the housing element, and I just got to it this morning. And so, in fact, I'll ask Lisa to correct me if I say anything was wrong here, because I probably misinterpreted a few things. But the main point I want to make is that the first guiding principle of the draft housing element is that housing in San Carlos supports an economically and socially diverse population. And I think that the housing element as written kind of falls short on that. We're trying to get affordable housing in the city as best we can, but the approaches that we're taking, I don't think are going to be that successful at it in many ways. The, there's a lot of elements in there about bonuses, density bonuses, and so on. In my experience with the city of San Carlos, the density bonuses are not going to go past the city council. Transit Village is a perfect example. To, in fact, you know, tell a developer that they're going to get a density bonus, they're going to be lucky to get anywhere near a third of the density that they're asking for in the city. So I think that that's kind of a, you know, an issue that's a political issue, it's not in the housing element, but the housing element is claiming that. The other thing that I want to speak about was the idea of displacement, and I actually had a comment about that HOU 1.7, exactly what Lisa has already addressed about rather than deferring it to the 21 Elements, that the city do it themselves, and so I was glad to hear that they're going to do that. There's another element in there that is potential discrimination against Section 8 voucher recipients. That's an HOU 5.5. And that's another one where it was set to be deferred to 21 Elements. I'm hoping that the city is going to take that one on as well so that we can get some progress. Because if it goes, number one, we have no commitment from 21 Elements that they even want to approach this as a discussion item among the city, and buying from the city, so how can we defend on it? And number two, if they do go into it, the city will take a long time, but between the 21 Elements and the city will take twice as long a much time, so I just hope the city jump into it, hopefully expeditiously. And lastly, I would like to suggest adding a new action item, and we may not have to do this, but it's, I'm proposing an HOU 5.9, and it's basically maintain an inventory of sites suitable for workforce housing. We have the inventory for the sites that meet the basic housing requirements, but the thing about workforce housing or affordable housing is the best way that we can get that is to have some affordable housing developers come in and to apply for the low-income tax credits. And in order to do that, you have to have properties located in the right location because the state and the feds have requirements about where those sites are located, and mostly they need to be transit-oriented development, they need to be downtowns, and so on. So we need to be real careful about what sites we think are potential for affordable housing. One that's way off the transit line, the distance, is not going to get the tax increment funding that you need. So I thought it would be useful to try to take the inventory that we have and see which of those would fit under that category that would potentially help a nonprofit developer come in and develop affordable housing. I think that's it particularly here. Oh, the, I am confused about the balance of jobs to housing. Scott says the balance, Lisa's comments earlier said that there was 17,000 jobs and 9,000, or whatever it was. It was a real discrepancy between the two, so I would like to see what's going on. There was another comment in the draft element, if I remember correctly, and Lisa, correct me on this, 91% of the people who live in San Carlos work outside of the city, and 91% of the people who work in the city live outside of San Carlos. Is that correct? Do you remember that in there?
I think I recall that that is indeed in there, but I will confirm that.
Well, what that tells me, if it's 91 or 81%, whatever, what that tells me is that people are, you don't have to worry about traffic. People are commuting in and out of the city all the time because we don't have a balance in the city where the jobs, the people who work in the city actually are working, live in the city are actually working in the city. And the 91% of the people who are working in San Carlos, probably 50, 60% of those are low-income people. They're working on Laurel Street, they're your gardeners, they're your teachers, a lot of people, they're living in the East Bay. So they're creating the traffic. So that's why we want to get affordable housing in the city of San Carlos, so that those people have a place to live and not have to commute across the bridge and not have to screw up our streets, basically. So strong pitch for affordable housing. I'd like to make, see the housing element even stronger than it is, you know, as best we can, and I don't know exactly how we do that, but I was a little disappointed that we lost the housing on the fourth floor on Laurel Street. But, yeah, not one other reason, you know, it's just, it gives you the opportunity to have housing in there, but that part of your ordinance you just passed. Anyway, that's my comments. The letter is kind of old now, we've already addressed some of the items here, but you can maybe review it at your leisure and see if there's anything in there. I also strongly support the Housing Leadership Council's guidelines, policies, and there were several policies in there that did not get into the housing element, as Lisa mentioned, which I think might want to be revisited in terms of displacement. Displacement is something interesting because it's not only someone, the rents, rent goes up, so someone can't afford the rents, so they move to the East Bay, or someone's going to demolish a house, and so they have to go somewhere, or someone has a duplex, they decide to convert it to a single-family, so the second tenant is kicked out. But it also involves a commercial, your people downtown, your businesses, that the rents go up for the businesses and your local businesses get driven out of San Carlos, potentially. And that should be addressed as well, if you want to keep your local people, your local businesses, and so on. We need to somehow put some kind of controls on what can happen in terms of rent increases or other things that might drive people out of the city who we'd like to have here. And so I think that's all I can have to say, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. So that's the only, Bonnie? I can't get enough pieces of paper with your name on it, all right.
I concur with everything that was just said for the housing element, and the thing I bring to you is a personal request for you to really stress, as has been brought forth by Lisa in the report, the second element, the second unit element. I'm an example of that. I have the first second unit permit in the city of San Carlos, and the family's been living with me for four and a half years, and it's working very well. It helps me with the mortgage and the house insurance. And I'm a typical retired elder citizen that, you know, is on limited income, and it helps me to have the family living with me, and it's working out for them, too. I know sometimes in-laws don't work, but they can work, and it's very pleasant for me. I also have friends that are sharing their homes. This is another viewpoint, and several of them have shared with another elder widow, and it's working out very well for them. And this is something that I wondered if we can get credit for the second units, because, you know, I've been asking for years that they find out, the illegal ones, because having come from the construction field, I know sometimes electrical and plumbing is not done probably properly because people don't have the correct inspection. Maybe they think the guy is a good plumber, but, you know, maybe they're hiring them and they're not even licensed. So I think this inspection, and you should be picking up credit for the second units and for the shared units that you discover, and I hope that that goes into our count. Does it?
I believe it does. Jeff Baird, sorry. Second units are considered by the state as a means of affordable housing.
Yeah, but are you, is the city making sure that they're counting every one of these as they find them?
We are.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so that...
So another question for Lisa is shared housing. I have walked my neighborhood as part of the parking permit thing. There are a lot of people who are renting together and sharing houses. Are those people getting counted to, as, towards that goal? And if that's the case, then the GESC neighborhood is maybe one of the major already affordable housing transit-oriented, near transit, located near transit, and we should be, I forget the word, but you are supposed to be taking care of us. You should be saving our neighborhood, and you shouldn't be adding to the pressures of our living there. And I'm very happy to hear that underutilized, I mean, you guys, the city before looked at GESC Eastside as underutilized, and now that's not the case, that we're the lower, maybe we still are lower in value, but when you're a million dollars, how can you call that lower, you know, low income? It's not. And so I think you need to really pay attention to the part in your thing that everywhere that you have single-family housing, if you're going to pick on our neighborhood, then everywhere up in the hills, up on Crestview, is open for business, affordable, you can add a second unit, you can, and also, if you cannot save and respect the GESC thing, then I don't see how you can have, I believe, the Highlands Park or up there somewhere, when those houses went in, it was supposed to be, okay, single-family housing, we're going to save this, harbor industrial area, we're going to save it for commercial. Well, what's the matter with saving or respecting us? And you've heard about the notification issues? People either don't pay attention or you don't, like, you send a letter that looks like it's not important. And I'll tell you, the people who send out those letters for water insurance company, they look so official. I swear, my mother and other people, they almost signed, oh, should I sign up for this? This is important, is this a bill? No, but you guys send out a thing and it's like, housing, hotel, is this new? I thought I already just went to a hotel meeting. So I don't know. I would just like to reiterate, affordable housing can go anywhere in the city. Equal access to affordable housing means it should be everywhere. And I probably am almost nine seconds, and I'd just like to say that you need to start putting it there and not just think of Eastside, where you're going to make a buck.
Thank you. Thank you. So I don't have any more speaker slips. It's okay, don't worry about it. I appreciate the offer. So I think that at this point I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay, so, I mean, at this point, I mean, this isn't an action item per se, I mean, it's receiving it. it's receiving it. I can't imagine we're going to vote against receiving it, but I think this is an opportunity for folks to let staff know if they want any changes to the draft housing element before it goes to the state. And I suppose we could vote on those things, but, you know, let's play by ear at this point. Does anyone have any changes they would like to see staff make to the draft housing element before it goes out to either the city council or the state? And why don't I start down there? No? How about you?
No changes, but I did, Lisa, I'm sorry, you mentioned the home-sharing affordability language didn't make it in, and I'm just wondering if you have that language or where specifically it would go.
Certainly, I believe it is in your packet under Attachment Four. So you kind of have to skip by, I think it's closer to the end. Actually, it's right before the fold-out.
Yep, I see it, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. If there was like a home-sharing provision passed, does that mean that that applies to any structure in the community? And I guess my question is, would home, do, in that case, do homeowners associations have the ability to limit, or is it, is the provision for all?
The way that we're approaching the home-sharing policy is not in an informal way. In fact, the nonprofit group, you'll have to help me out here, I know it's HIP, but I can't remember what the acronym stands for. They actually have a formal home-sharing program that they encourage folks who are looking, you know, maybe to rent a room or to share a house with someone as a means to make it more affordable, you know, to have a place to live, can look towards HIP housing as a resource. And they maintain kind of like a list whereby people who may be looking for someone to share, maybe it's in the mortgage or in the rent, who are looking for someone to share that with them, they can go to HIP housing and be placed on a list. And I believe if someone who is also looking to share a home, they can go to HIP housing. That way, it really kind of cuts out, you know, all of the questioning. You know right away that there's someone looking for a home-sharing opportunity. So the way that this action item is written is simply that the city will work with HIP housing as part of this formal home-sharing matching opportunity, and, you know, guide people to HIP housing as a resource. There's really, you know, nothing more to it than that.
So it really does not state one way or another? It just basically facilitates people that are already interested? So it doesn't speak to what the city ordinance, supporting it or not, just that it will help facilitate?
Correct, because we don't have anything that, you know, limits someone from, you know, renting a room out. I mean, you know, there are provisions, for example, in the second unit ordinance that we have adopted. It does require that the property owner either live in the second unit or live in the primary house.
No, the reason I bring it up is because I'm thinking of what our homeowners association bylaws say, and whether or not it excludes that ability or not. And that's why I was wondering if it was a citywide ordinance, but you're saying it's not. I mean, you know, I'm thinking when I get older and I'm a widow, I might want someone to live with me, and I'm wondering if where I live, I've seen allowed, so that's why I asked the question. Okay, thank you.
Human Investment Project. So, yeah. Scott?
Yeah.
Do you have a number of comments?
A couple of clarifications, let's call them that.
One of our members needs to take a quick break. So, I'm going to adjourn the meeting for three to four minutes, three to four minutes, and then we'll come back. And I'm sorry for folks having to wait around. What's go ahead and get the meeting back together?
Oh, yes, please do, yes. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Aging, too, we need to, yeah.
So David, so I can go through your letter? You want to give me that chance? All right, folks, so the public hearing is closed. I believe two of us have asked our questions, and it's now to you, Scott.
So, a couple of things. First, the point I was trying to make earlier about the balance between the housing and jobs, it was not to necessarily point out that we didn't need low-income housing, but to accent the fact that where we need housing is in the low-income, below-market-rate area. And less of the sort of moderate and above housing is necessary to meet the needs of the city at the moment for jobs. So, one of the questions I have for staff is, I remember, I think Bonnie and I were both on the group that helped write the last housing element through EDAC and the Residential Design Review Committee. I thought somewhere it mentioned, or it was mentioned, that affordable units needed to be spread out throughout the community. And I just wonder if that's still the case, or was I mistaken in the fact that, you know, you can concentrate all the housing, all the affordable housing in one area?
We don't have any geographical kind of regulation for affordable housing. Through our below-market-rate ordinance, there is language that when affordable housing is required of a project, in a project, that those units that are designated as affordable be similar and not, you know, significantly different from the other units as part of an overall project. That's on a per-project basis. But we don't have anything in our ordinance that, you know, directs affordable housing to only certain areas. If you are a project right now in our ordinance, through our below-market-rate ordinance, that is seven units or more, you're required to provide it wherever you may be. So that's all I wanted to say, unless you wanted to, sure, yeah, then.
Okay. No, I was just going to say that I think one area that this new housing element strengthens is related to second units. And one, eliminating the 400-foot distance between second units, also looking at accessory dwelling units as possible conversion for second units. And that is one way that communities use to kind of distribute the fair-share burden, if you will, or opportunity for affordable housing throughout the community through second units. Because there are some neighborhoods where you don't want to put higher-density housing or that might not have sites available for affordable housing or whatever. So you kind of use the resources that you have. But I think that is one way that you kind of distribute out the, you know, the resources so that it's, it is a citywide effort to address housing needs. And second units throughout San Mateo County have become more and more important to communities in addressing their housing needs. And we've done surveys and found that a significant number of second units are actually rented either at zero rents to family members, or at very low market rents that actually meet very low and low-income needs. So they're a strong component of a strategy, and I think they're also a good way to kind of distribute the responsibilities.
Okay, Scott?
No, I think, just as a comment, I would think that as a community, we wouldn't want to, we would like to, I mean, the BMR seems like a good way to address affordable housing. I wouldn't want to create a affordable housing area. That's the way you'd create slums. I think basically you want to distribute affordable housing throughout the community so it's integrated. And that seems to be the policy is written to do, correct?
Yeah, I agree. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't concentrate it all in one area.
Right.
And so, I wanted to know if somewhere that was sort of written or implied that it would be spread out throughout the community rather than concentrated in one area, recognizing that there would be a higher concentration near transit and in the downtown. But that wouldn't preclude it from being, you know, anywhere. So, the next, actually, sort of section that I have here, and actually it's the last one, is concerning the second, the units. And so, it talks about using, providing it on low-density lots. I assume that's RS3 and RS6?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there limits on lot coverage? Can somebody essentially put two additional second units on their property and cover 80% of the lot? And is there, so I guess the question is, are there lot coverage limits?
Yes, there are. There are lot coverage limits for both the RS3 and RS6 zoning districts. So the idea is that while the state requires that they be permitted by right, we still have the ability to enforce our local development standards, meaning you still need to meet lot coverage requirements, setback requirements, distances between building requirements, height requirements, et cetera. And if you have a lot whereby you can still meet those standards that already apply to the site, then you could, you can achieve a second unit on that property. But for example, if you had, say, a smaller lot where you had a very large home that was covering the majority of the site and exceeded, and we're close to your lot coverage limit, then, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't provide a second unit on that site because you wouldn't be able to meet the lot coverage requirements.
Unless it's 119 square feet.
Yeah, I've thought about that. Okay. Have second units been denied because of the 400-foot rule in San Carlos?
Not since I have been here, and I don't know if the 400-foot requirement was something new in the last housing element update, or I'm sorry, in the last zoning ordinance update. We, basically, the regulation right now requires that we hold like an informal new in the last housing element update, or I'm sorry, in the last zoning ordinance update. We, basically, the regulation right now requires that we hold, like, an informal hearing, a waiver hearing, whenever there is a second unit that is being proposed within 400 feet of a second unit that already exists, we're required to do notice and have a hearing and allow the community to come and be part of the process. And in my tenure here at the City of San Carlos, there was one case where there was a second unit being proposed within that 400-feet limit. A lot of neighbors did come out. They voiced their concerns, and staff worked with them to address some of their concerns where they could. Not every concern could be addressed. But they did go ahead and approve that second unit, and there was no appeal.
So is the removal of the 400-foot rule something that's being required because of the changes in state regulations? Or is this something to just remove sort of what's viewed as an impediment to second units?
That's correct. Right now, we're viewing it as a potential constraint to second units. And we're not even sure that the language that's currently in our code that requires a hearing on, for a second unit that's within 400 feet in an existing second unit complies with the spirit intent of the state law. So, you know, we, I'm not even sure how, you know, that got through the last time. But within the overall approach of looking at removing any potential constraints, to promote second units is something that we received a fair number of comments on in the process. And as I mentioned before in the presentation, since a large majority of the housing stock is in single-family detached, we think it's prudent to look at any type of constraint there might be towards second units and consider removing it. So that's why we are suggesting that.
And so my last question would be, are there any other plans to modify the second unit, sort of development standards that exist, like the setbacks, or the height, or the size, or anything like that?
All of those that are currently existing will remain in place. So all of the development standards still remain and are not being proposed to undergo any changes.
Do you know what those are off the top of your head? I used to remember this, but I don't remember what the setback requirements are.
There is a section in the zoning ordinance. It's the section that deals with standards for specific uses. So we have a section in our ordinance that deals specifically on second units. And then certainly, within the base zoning district, whether that's RS3 or RS6, the setback requirements are still in place, with the exception being for any type of flexibility there may be in the second unit ordinance, which we are looking up now. Yeah, so, excuse me, it's Section 1823-210, for those of you that happen to have a zoning ordinance in front of you. And the second unit ordinance talks about the purpose and intent for second unit, and it specifies standards. So it has standards relative to the location of the second unit, the total number of second units permitted per single-family dwelling unit, which is only one. So if you had a large piece of land and you had enough space to put two, you can only do one. It talks about the maximum floor area. So the maximum floor area of a detached second unit can exceed six, cannot exceed 640 square feet. And it has development standards relative to the height, setbacks, and openings relative, you know, to windows and doors and so forth. So there is some greater level of detail within the code already that governs how second units can be developed on the site. However, these are not being proposed to be modified. The only change we're making is that whenever there's a second unit that's within 400 feet of another, we're not going to have that waiver hearing.
Do you have anything else, Scott?
Nope.
How about you, Jesse?
He hit on, like, all of them plus three more, so, yeah.
So for me, just going through Mr. Krab's letter relatively quickly, he asked the planning department to revisit the Quantified Objectives to increase the goal of affordable workforce housing to 45%, to 45% minimum. I understand where he's coming from on that, although, I mean, I hate the idea of setting objectives that we can't possibly meet. I don't know whether staff has any comments on that recommendation. I mean, the thrust of it is that we-
Maybe we can compare it to what's currently in the preliminary draft versus what David wants.
Just strive for as much very low, low income.
I mean, I think that the idea is, and I'm not going to say there's consensus, it doesn't, but the place where we are most in need of additional housing is in the low-income and very-low-income area. And so if everyone recognizes that, why wouldn't the goal be to increase that housing more than the other kinds of housing? I mean, it makes sense to me. I mean, the only reason why I would say not to do that is, it seems like we're failing to meet our goals already. So then if you increase the goal to 45%, you're just setting yourself up to fail even more. But, I mean, I-
This Quantified Objectives requirement is really kind of your best effort in achieving. So the numbers that we have in the housing element are based on the program numbers that we feel, you know, realistically, the city can achieve. So we want to link it to-
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
-to those numbers. But I think we can give it some additional thought based on, you know, these comments and yours.
And then Mr. Krab asked to revisit 1.7, and staff already did. And then he asked the planning department to severely limit any fee reductions or waivers for high-density developments. Any thoughts on that? This is on page three of his letter.
You're asking staff if we have any thoughts. We can certainly be more implicit within the language, such that, you know, we're really encouraging projects that are providing affordable housing. Those would be the ones where we would consider the possibility for reducing or waiving fees versus just standalone, high-density projects that may not be incorporating affordable housing. So I think that's the nature of that comment. So that's not an issue for us. I think the way that the language reads, I don't have that page of the housing element open, but it's really about facilitating infill housing. And, you know, this is a carryover policy from the previous housing element that maybe was written during a different time. And certainly, we don't have a problem receiving our fair share of infill housing projects. We have quite a few of them that we've been working on. So we can certainly revise that to focus it, tie it directly to projects that are proposing affordable units versus those that aren't. I think that was the issue by Mr. Krab.
And then Mr. Krab asked that we ask you to revisit Action 5.5 and come back with specific recommendations that the city can implement right now on discouraging Section 8 voucher discrimination. I'm not going to do that, simply because, I mean, I think you want to study it, and I think it's a pretty prickly issue. I mean, you can't really, forcing folks to, anyway, I'm not going to do that if someone else wants to, that's fine. And then Mr. Krab asks that we ask you to add Action 5.9 to identify sites for workforce housing that can qualify for federal and state low-income tax credits. Any thoughts?
We can do that. That's something that we can do, but we would-
Is there a benefit to it?
Well, you know, it's good information to have. I don't know that it necessarily belongs in the, I mean, we can have language that directs staff to maintain an inventory that's, you know, held outside of the housing element update, excuse me, outside of the housing element document itself. This would be probably a dynamic list that changes from time to time. It's my understanding that some of the criteria that the fed, federal and state, for federals and state low-income tax credit can change. So the list, you know, may change from time to time. But we can certainly create such a list and maintain it, and if-
Well, he was suggesting that it be, since we're not doing it right now, it would be an action item in the housing element that would, you know, potentially increase the number of sites utilized for workforce housing. And if you thought that, if you thought that it actually would have that effect, then I would support that. If you conclude that it wouldn't have that effect, that it wouldn't have a positive effect, then I don't, I mean, I don't see any reason for staff to engage in an idle act. And I don't have the expertise to know whether it would actually be helpful.
Maybe can I, I can ask one of my colleagues to see if a list like that really does go a long way. I mean, it kind of puts the burden on the city to do the homework whereby maybe an affordable housing developer kind of goes through that criteria and determines if a site meets the eligibility criteria. So-
housing element received. It has been received. Okay.
And thank you for your comments.
And thank you. So moving on to seven, report on recent city council actions.
The council took a break for the holidays, so I have nothing to report this evening.
Planning Commission?
Oh, I'm sorry. But one thing that I would like to mention that's somewhat related, not so much a city council action, but something that's coming up. We have these Shape San Carlos community meetings that are upcoming in the next week. And we have one this coming Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at the community meeting at the ACC, the Adult Community Center, right across from City Hall. And then we have another meeting on January 13th at 7:00 p.m. in the library on the second floor, and then another one on the 15th at 7:00 p.m. . And these are community meetings to survey the community, ask the community, well, what do you want? If we were to, if you were to, you know, want more recreational facilities in the community, or more parks, or more parking, or what is it that the community wants to see? And this is in preparation for a potential bond measure in the future. So one, assessment of what the community desires, and then figure out how to pay for it. So that's what these community meetings are about, is to, is to receive information from the community. That's it.
Is that appeal that was pending, I think, for next week, is that still happening?
That is. That's going to the city council this, on the 12th of January. So the appeal will be heard by the council then.
Exciting. Planning Commission, comments or reports?
I'm glad we didn't have to actually go through the hotel issue this time. But one thing I'd like to ask is that, when it comes back to us, I'm particularly interested in what kind of accommodations that the city would want to make to the community in lieu, basically, because they're, they're, I really feel like they're shouldering the burdens of the transit village. Landmark's coming in, the school's coming in, and now we're asking them to handle, you know, hotel motels. And that doesn't seem like it's very equitable for that community. And when you don't have equity, then you need to have some kind of compensation or accommodation. So key for me in making that decision would be, what kind of accommodations are we thinking about making to the community for accepting that additional burden? This is my, this is my comment.
Any other, okay?
Two quick ones. The first one is, for the Shape San Carlos forums, are people allowed to just show up for them, or do they need to sign up through the website?
No, I think you can just show up.
Okay. So if somebody hears about it at the last minute, they can just, they can show up?
Certainly.
Okay. And then the second thing is, I know both Angela and I actually had additional areas for discussion of potential zoning ordinance changes. And so do you want us to just email those to you, or do you want, how do you want to handle that?
Yeah, I think it would be nice to see them up front. And then maybe we could kind of package it and maybe have a Planning Commission discussion at an upcoming meeting.
That's what I was hoping, is that, you know, we throw out the suggestions, and then you evaluate them, and go, and then we have the discussion after that.
Sure.
Any other Planning Commission, okay?
We had talked, or there was an email that was going around about a potential meeting coming up about how the school relates to the general plan.
That's correct. We received a letter prior to our holiday furlough from a representative from the county for the school, requesting a general plan conformity analysis, which is required. And then just today, we received a formal, you know, application vis-à-vis, you know, the general plan application, excuse me, a general planning permit application was submitted, and fees were paid by the school district in order to perform this evaluation. At this point, we are looking towards the next Planning Commission meeting of January 20th, to bring that to the commission. That require general plan conformity analysis. But we do also have a certain amount of time that is written within the law that allows a certain amount of time to respond to such a request. But at this point, we are targeting the 20th. However, you know, the caveat being, if we need more time, you know, we will take it.
So then we are not having a special Planning Commission meeting on the 7th, just to clarify?
Correct. Yes, correct. Thank you.
Any other Planning Commission comments or reports? Any correspondence other than what we've previously seen?
No. And just to confirm, staff received correspondence from Bob Black, and Gene and Seth Deigle regarding the zoning ordinance changes. And then for the housing, preliminary draft housing element, we received one letter from David Krab.
Okay. And then Planning Staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects?
I think we discussed a couple of updates tonight, which one of them was the lot split. And then I was going to mention the general plan conformity analysis for the site at 535 Old County Road, which we just discussed. And other than that, I don't have any additional updates to provide.
Okay. Thank you. If there's nothing further, then the meeting is adjourned. If there's nothing further than the meeting is adjourned.